Dave, how are you?
There's no chicken ballot.
But now. I think there's also the.
Well, it doesn't cover what he. I've never heard that one.
I got a father in law.
You're making a ring.
Yeah, my father-in-law is for calories.
Wow.
Where was that? Okay.
Now that's.
Crazy.
That's why I thought her capital.
Forty.
Yeah, insane.
Like ninety percent done and then it took like another six months.
I was gonna say, were they eighty or ninety percent? For all, he says. I find the best way to.
It's like test for that before anything.
You know, the only way I.
Me and, uh, me and.
Yeah.
I didn't know this was still going. They probably cut it. Didn't get enough.
He thought it's the first time. It was, I was like second. I mean, it's like he keeps sleep for twenty hours. Get up to sit at table, barely sit at heat for fifteen minutes and go back to bed. Yes. Oh, no. Some man. No, he, no, he does have this. Wait, does that? This thing where I'm like sitting, I'll be like. Thing, I love it. But no, he was like down, first down, and then, um, I got it. I was.
Yeah. I mean, I, I lived it.
So four days.
Literally.
Some reason. Yeah.
What was the other? They put a higher, higher tall, eight feet. Well, I know that. Why you take pot and add now? Cause it'll put you down for. Yeah, it's all four.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Palm Coast City Council Workshop. Today is Tuesday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. It is six P M. in the evening. We're in the John Nett's Community Wing of City Hall. I'm calling this meeting to order if you please, if you could please. God's for the pledge of allegiance in a short moment of silence.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you could please silence all your devices. Roll call, Allison, if you may.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pompeo.
President.
Councilmember Gomorrah.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Um, the president.
Thank you, Ms. Allison. Uh, we're gonna begin with public participation. I, I remind everyone to read the rules inside the agenda. No defamatory comments, and you'll have three minutes, just be a thirty-minute, yeah, public comments. If the matter is on the agenda, wait until the agenda item, you'll have time to speak. But beyond that, come on up if you have a public comment. Yes, Ms. Chantel.
Hi, Chantal Pruninger. Um, I was thinking this week, with so much development, so many new houses being built, what would it take to have, uh, uh, buses in the area? Who do we talk to? Who is, who would be in charge of that? Because there's so much traffic, if we could get people, uh, transported here and there. It's just a question. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Jeff Adams. Um, I just wanted to address a few of the things I saw in the last meeting concerning the rezoning on eleven, I believe it's, uh, Park Cove or the S M R, um, etching plant. There was a lot of, I thought, misconceptions by the people that were all grouped in the back. Um, just to remind everybody, this was, the rezoning was approved, or the rezoning uh, comprehensive plan was approved, or they, they recommended it. Also, you had, uh, for the purpose of zoning, it was compatible with everything around it. But the biggest thing that I think everybody was misunderstanding, this plant, I've seen two or three of them built by S, by them, by S R M, and they're very safe, they're very environmentally friendly. They're gonna pour concrete over the whole place, and that was not recognized by the people, you know, that were grouped in the back here. I think they were the ones that were only concerned with those two streets that go back to the actual proposed plan. Also, I was noticing that, uh, the air conditioning company that's back there predominantly has taken over the cul-de-sac and are using it like a parking. I think that was one of their big objections, was they were misusing or using public streets, excuse me, and roads for their own personal purpose. Now, the one concern that I heard also was that the trucks would be detrimental to the roads. It's not a very realistic, uh, concern because it's all controlled by D O T, and most of these trucks are gonna have drop, are gonna have a drop axle on them. So I would like for you, when you go to the second reading, please take those things into consideration, that, you know, we're gonna be talking about fifteen to twenty million dollar investment into the city, and one point five to two point two five million in investment in employees. And that's a pretty big boost to the city, and I, I would like, you know, for those things to be reconsidered when you guys have a chance for the second reading. So, you know, I make myself available if anybody has additional questions concerning that plant. But I think, uh, the people, the representatives from S R M did a reasonable job if they would go back and really reread that, as opposed to the emotional outcry that came from the people in the back of the room. So, if you would, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Jeanie Duarte, I have a concern about someone on this dais bribing residents, uh, offering to pay for a covert. And when asked about it, they said, they, when questioned about it, the response was, do you want accountability? Or do you want your covert fixed? It's hurricane season. We are facing yet another hurricane just days away. At the July twenty-second presentation with Northeast Regional Council, it was made clear that there is no study on the impacts of when it comes to rate of growth. At timestamp two nineteen, it was stated, and I quote, "And for community development, Ray, when while we're looking at M P Ds, some of the big M P Ds out west, something to think about for sure, that's gonna be key for us when we, when if we can keep in mind, be mindful of using that as a tool." This shows that the impact rate of growth for growth has not been considered. So, yes, you may want to consider that, um, you may wanna consider throwing those developers a few more carrots to control the rate of growth and incorporate natural-based solutions and as suggested. And why was water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant two put ahead of wastewater treatment plant one? It is projected that seawater levels will be as much as one to four feet higher by twenty forty. Our seawalls, our new seawalls will be underwater. There is no vulnerability assessment to identify these types of critical assets and protect our city and citizens from heavy rainfalls, storm surges, and even nuisance flooding. The presenter, or the presenters that day urged the use of natural-based solutions like bile swells by planting vegetation and suggest the purchase of property for a purpose of natural drainage. Which leads me to ask, why was I denied access last week to the canal meeting? And why did you only invite two marine contractors? You left out companies like Aqua, uh, Nautical, Elite, Peck, and others from attending that meeting. You not only violated my right to be heard and informed, but theirs as well. And do you, I, I do have concerns also with the wastewater treatment plant two sitting right next to wastewater treatment plant, or water treatment plant three.
Yes, sir, Mr. Stone.
Good evening. We still have major problems in this city, and a lot of it's not getting corrected. I get a lot of people on X store that ask me to continue to speak, whether you get an answer or you don't. I get the same request from Facebook, the water department. I went to my faucet the other day, straight from the faucet to a glass of water, four hundred reading, and according to someone from the city, oh, that's not too bad. You don't have to worry till it hits five hundred. Well, not according to my medical doctor, it's not healthy, it's not good for you. People are complaining about green water in their property, and we just don't have the right council other than Mayor Norris in place. He votes for something, yes, you guys are deliberately voting no. He votes for no, you vote yes. The people are getting real fed up. There are letters going out to the state all over the place, various, uh, ethics committees and other departments. And eventually, Tallahassee is gonna wonder what the hell is going on down there. Additionally, Mr. Miller, you're the hidden mystery with taking money from developers. So you have sold your soul to the body, while people are begging not to give in to the developer, developers. You bragged out you were fifty thousand in all clean money. Forty percent of it came from developers, plus your own purpose, personal invest. It's so wrong, it's ridiculous. I keep on hoping people writing letters. Eventually, someone's gonna say, what the hell is going on in this city? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. C D.
C D Rossell, K section. Uh, I emailed you this on, on wastewater two. I don't know if you all got it, but it's not all the information that I put in three, because that's a repeat. It gives you what we can do to bring that to the same circular expansion. It's, the one thing on the payment, if we just use what that makes, and that was, I believe, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand a year, if you look on there, and the investment to get it into the full circular plan was, I think, about two seventy-five. So that would be paid off in about two years if we don't put the whole plant in there. So that's, the other thing is on the cement plant. I so happen to be one of the officers of a company that has a silica mine in Canada. Anybody want a chunk? There's a lot of screaming going on about micro silica, the ten nanometer, which is considered a carcinogenic. Problem with that is they control that, and you, I, I guess, Councilman Pater, you went out to their facility and saw how clean they kept it. They are probably one of the, uh, most compliant, and they did have a problem, I guess, a few months ago at a cement plant, which did a discharge, but they got on top of that and fixed that up. But just so you know, this comes from the mine, goes into your medicines. I had fun putting this together. Goes into your toothpaste, it's in everything, your computers, your cellphone, everything you have almost has silicon, the paint on your house, paint on your car. This is a, uh, activated carbon to keep materials dry. This one is called super dry, and it's a, uh, calcium chloride. It has a warning on it, you know, the red box with the exclamation point in it. And this is silica gel, and this says, do not eat. But it's inert until you get down to the tin. I did a look at what is Florida beaches made of, hundred percent silica, guys. They do not measure silica, uh, dust at the beach, only unless there's construction, then there's a, a problem that they will measure. There is a, you know, except the beach, guys.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Steve.
Uh, I, Steve Carr, I have some, uh, just general observations about city councils in general that I would like to just have thoughts of. What is the purpose of the local government? Protect, serve, the residents of the local community. Who do the, who do you represent should be the people of the community? Before the vote on the water increase, how many visited low-income families? How many visited the fixed-income families to see how the increase would affect their families? Their ability to pay their mortgage, to pay their utilities, purchase healthy food, healthy food for their children, purchase school supplies for the children, get medical help to pay for medications, to get to work. Yes, the list is much longer than that. Uh, some of the reasons I would look at is, they would not be able to support my campaign. We really don't want them in the city. Compassion might influence the way I would vote on a business deal. Over the years, just my observation, many when elected to positions, everything now is about businesses. So, uh, I've lost my place. Because, uh, because now I'm in a position of authority, now residents, low-income, fixed-income families, uh, voters, et cetera, who are they? Can't let them influence my business decisions. What about the people I'm in office to protect and serve? Businesses observe how city governments treat their residents, the people they swore to protect and serve. Why would they locate to an area where their employees will not be taken care of? For businesses to come here, show that the city has a heart for their residents. Love attracts, not, not ignoring people, love attracts, not failure to support them. Love attracts and not mistreating them. It is not just business in our, oh, it is not just business. You're in office to serve and protect people that includes their families and their livelihoods. Low-income families and fixed-income families are among the people that the city is to protect and serve. And you cannot protect and serve them if you are, do not, are not concerned about what harms them. When not caring to see how decisions will harm others will always lead to greater harm and a greater cost to humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Yes. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Tony Emerald. Um, two things, on the August eighth Palm Coast Insider email that was sent out, um, there was an article about Mark Stoveridge and all the great work he did for us, and I applaud for what he did. I'm just curious, there was a comment about just a few months ago, we approved a three hundred and four thousand dollar budget to integrate our cameras with the sheriff's department. And somehow that got significantly lowered by roughly three hundred thousand, according to that article that was in that. So I'm just curious, how did we have a budget for three hundred and four thousand and then end up, I guess, roughly four thousand dollars, we did the same job? Great for the interim city assistant, I mean, manager, uh, assistant for finding that, but I'm just curious how, that's the thing, that's not just, you did it by fifty percent, you literally basically did it for free when it was supposed to be at three hundred and four thousand. So I'm just curious how that worked out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one come forward, we'll bring it back to the dais. City manager, you got any follow-up?
Yes, oh, can you hear me? Um, the, uh, public transportation, Ms. Chantel, that is, um, through Flagler County. Um, and if you fill out a comment card, we can make sure that you get connected, uh, with that organization. There is a, uh, Flagler County Transportation Disadvantaged Association, so, um, and they are a board, and we can help you work through that. Regarding the wastewater plant, wastewater treatment plant two, um, that project was actually delayed during the recession because we did not see, uh, the growth in Palm Coast. Um, and then whenever we did see it start to pick up in twenty sixteen, we moved forward with that plant since it was delayed. Um, and then monitoring wastewater treatment plant one, uh, we took the necessary steps back in twenty twenty-one uh, to move forward with that project, um, but all projects are contingent upon funding. Um, regarding the Saltwater Canal Task Force, uh, there will be several meetings with several different stakeholders as we navigate this ongoing initiative. Uh, that was just one where this particular stakeholder group was involved. Um, so thank you for your interest, Ms. Duarte, in, um, wanting to participate that in. So thank you for your interest, Ms. Duarte, in wanting to participate that in that in the future. And then Mr. Amaral, to your point about the cameras, we did not execute the contract that city council approved. Instead, we had staff start talking to each other and communicate more efficiently. And that is why we did not execute the contract, and we still have the cameras and we're communicating better, so saving us that money. And I think that answers everything that I can, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else from the council, have any comments?
I do.
Yes, sir, go right ahead.
I just wanted to mention that's one of the things that's near and dear to my heart is the disadvantaged public transportation system in the county. As we said, you have to sign up for that. It's for people with disadvantages or age. Age alone is plenty of reason to use it, but you have to sign up, contact the people involved. Once you do that, then it's available and you make your reservation ahead of time. There are 30 buses. The drivers are wonderful. Every year I went out and experienced the trips. There's two different sizes of buses. It's unfortunate, but buses, metro buses like we're used to in big cities just simply don't work here. We've looked at it many times. There may be a point in the future where the population gets big enough where you can support that. Right now, that system we have does work, but you do have to sign up. You can't wait to the last minute. It's not really a taxi service, like even like Uber. But signing up for it and taking advantage of that system, which many, many people do, I'm afraid not as many as could in the city. But we do have, that is our public transportation system that we have now.
Okay, we'll move along, going on to item E presentations. First presentation is all capital and fleet funds.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, as part of your ongoing budget process, this is our capital budget and fleet budget at the end. And I'll just remind you that many of these budgets you have seen before you during your 10-year workshop. We talked about the strategy and execution in the project specifically and moved some things around based off your direction. And then most recently, you've seen the water wastewater funds through the utility rate study. You saw transportation parks and fire impact fee funds through those impact fee raises that were just recently as well. So Carl's here to just go through the numbers with you since you are adopting this five-year work plan. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Tonight, we're going to go over the five-year CIP. We'll also go over the fleet management internal service fund budgets. I will turn it over to Carl, and he'll get us started. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. Carl Cody, Director of Stormwater Engineering. We're going to go through the various funds tonight. This is kind of a follow-up to our 10-year annual CIA update that we did a few months back. And we're going to begin with capital projects. So, you know, we're going to start off kind of giving a little description as to what that fund is. A lot of these funds have some type of restriction on them. So the capital projects fund is revenue from discretionary sales surtax. It's really the small county surtax. So there's a half a percent of the 7% sales tax that's collected in Flagler County. We get a portion of that that is split between all the municipalities within the county. It's committed for construction and improvement in public facilities. It was put in place by an ordinance that was enacted by Flagler County, and it expires So this is a summary slide of the revenue. You can see the first line is the what we bring in and what goes to the city of Palm Coast. It's just over $5 million a year, and it goes up incrementally over the five-year plan. We have a couple of grants in here, and we have some other revenues, which is primarily interest and other small, you know, funds. And then we have a bunch of inter-fund transfers. Primarily, those are for the maintenance operations complex coming from utility and stormwater, as well as building fund. That one and a half million, the general fund, is fund balance. A million is going towards the mock, and the half a million is going to be set aside for future saltwater canal maintenance. We have a couple of transfers going back to the park impact fee fund or coming into this fund, and then the some dollars to the CRA. Both of those are tied to projects at the Southern Rec Center that were just balancing up the correct operation of the fair share, whether it's impact fees or for his existing citizen share for those projects. So as we look at this slide, this is a summary by type of projects within the capital improvement fund. You can see that the biggest line is in the center of the slide, the maintenance operations complex. You know, mostly it's capital projects and multi-year projects. So we had our, we have our estimated dollars we're spending in '25, and then we have some dollars for some ongoing projects, and then some new projects shown in '26. And then we have future dollars in those other years, '27 through '30. So if we just look at some of the expenses, Holland Park, you know, that was just some final cost to wrap up that improvement project. Our park rehab renewal, those are our ongoing upkeep of our existing park system. And that's kind of what we tried to only do the urgent need project so we can set aside as much funds as possible for the maintenance operations center. IT, the big dollars in this year and next year's budget is to finish off the data server room here at City Hall to make those, finalize all those upgrades. City Hall has some improvements slated for next year. Fire stations is primarily fire station 25 to replace the bay doors and do some site improvements on the site there. That's existing contract that's going to continue on. We have some other small dollars at some of our fire stations as well, but it's primarily for 25. Southern Rec Center, you can see there's some small dollars in here for the existing improvements that were made there this year. Maintenance Operations Center, some of the site work that's ongoing now is going to spill over to next year, and we just received bids for the fuel facility and improvements to PV grade that is being reconciled now. Will be coming back to council, I believe, in October to move forward with the next phase of those improvements. We have some future phases further out in that five-year plan. Plan to continue and build the fleet facility and the wash facility and do some, some of the remaining site work with that first phase of the project. Our saltwater canal, we have those funds in there in '26 to do the design work that council directed staff to include in the budget. We have energy improvements, the big, those dollars are primarily for the two fire stations and community center. Community center has an offsetting grant, but that's what those dollars are primarily in '26. And then we have some smaller future improvements for energy improvements throughout our facilities in future years. And then we have some ADA improvements with various facilities to make some upgrades. Yes?
Just real quick. Can you lay out for me, what do you mean by energy improvements?
Excuse me?
The energy improvements that you...
The energy improvements...
You mean example?
Could be converting old lights to LED light fixtures. It could be upgrading an old mechanical unit to something that's more energy efficient. What's in '26 is primarily solar panels going on the roof of the two fire stations and community center. But some of those other energy improvements are, could be, we did a Siemens report probably 10 years ago, analyzed all the city facilities, and it targeted improvements, energy efficiency improvements, and then it laid out your, you know, basically your recovery, you know, your payback period. So we, we did a lot of those that had less than a 10-year payback, adding insulation, converting lights over, going to water-saving fixtures, you know, in some of our restrooms, those types of improvements.
Okay, thank you.
It could be pumps, too. You know, a lot of pumps were, were not variable, VFD, variable speed motors, things like that. But it was all based on a Siemens report that was done citywide.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Our ADA transition plan, you know, like I said, that was just to make improvements to bring us into compliance in some of our older facilities. And then the inter-fund transfers, that's primarily going to the fire and park impact fee fund for the existing citizen share portion of those new capacity projects.
I'm sorry, you know, I wasn't here when the whole mock was explained and planned and all that. And so just when I look at it, in '28, you show 15 million, and '29, 13 million. Is that, is because it's a phase?
Yeah, it's a two-year project. That would be to construct the new fleet facility building. And that's about a 24 million or so project, and there's equipment that goes in there, and there's some associated site work around the building that will have to get, you know, some concrete slabs in front of the aprons and around the building that would have to get poured.
That's when we decided to do it all there.
Right. And then that last column, that 7.3 million, that's for the wash facility. So that, that would be the one A, one B, one C. So it would be the fuel, fleet, and wash is in our five-year plan with all the associated site improvements.
Okay, sorry. Just the site work alone, I think, was what, 12 million? I mean, just to get everything going, that initial...
Yeah, exactly. It's about 11 million. It's all for the site infrastructure, bringing in all the fill, all the infrastructure, utility, stormwater ponds, you know, digging all that. That's wrapping up. That'll be done by December. And then we have the next GMP coming to council in October to build and construct out the fuel depot.
To build it up, vertical. Yes.
I have a couple of questions to you, Carl. On the last slide, you showed in 2026, a fund balance appropriation of over $7 million. And then I'm showing in the expenditures for 2026, quite an increase in the expenditures. So I'm assuming that we're planning on making a fund balance transfer over to this fund in order to find clearly what are extra expenses in 2026. What is the fund balance appropriation from?
So the fund balance appropriation are savings from previous years within the capital projects fund, and we've been saving for the purpose of the mock.
Okay, so that was already anticipated. We're not pulling from anything else.
That is correct. It was already anticipated.
Okay. And then the other monies that we're seeing here, so, you know, when I look at the total expenditures and the total revenues, I'm seeing fluctuations, a lot of fluctuations in the amounts that we're anticipating, and I'm wondering how we came up with those anticipated amounts.
You're talking, you're in reference to the revenue?
Well, yeah, but I mean, we're basing the expenditures on the revenues, right? So, I mean, it affects both, but yes, how are we anticipating those revenues? They're not very consistent. Doesn't seem to be a trend, I guess, is what I'm curious about.
Yeah, we can go back to the revenue. So when those, when the mock was programmed through the rate studies and within stormwater and utility, we identified a total need, and we looked out that with the holdup on moving forward, the mock is not having enough capital funds for the public works and general fund portions of the building. You know, so what we did with stormwater and utility is they said, okay, we need X amount of money, and we split it over the seven or 10 years and said it's this much a year so we can phase it in and build it up. So there is some, there'll be a little bit of excess revenue on utility, but depending on timing and needs, the stormarter and utility may build their portion of the admin facility first, and then we'll come on, we'll come back and expand the facility for public works. So it's just a matter of collecting the revenue so we're not hitting utility for 10 million in one year.
No, I can appreciate that. That I understand, and I appreciate that planning. But my question is more, if we know that this revenue comes from discretionary sales surtax, how are we anticipating how much that's going to be year after year?
So we see conservative increases in this revenue. It comes to us from the state. So what we do is we do a 10-year trend and then project in the following year. I think it comes right around the 2% to 3%, and that's what you see on that first line over there, that small county surtax. We're projecting conservative increases. So he's phasing in the project as he has available revenue, basically. So it's not actually the need for the expense that's driving it, it's the availability of revenues that's driving the expenses.
Okay, so when we see that there's clearly revenues coming from these other enterprise funds, it's because what we are anticipating that contribution to be towards the mock from those funds?
That is correct.
Got it, okay. And then when we see the transfer from the general fund over to this, I only see it for 2025. Is that a policy decision to not transfer general fund monies over in the future?
So that transfer is actually your leftover general fund over the 25% allocation, and the split is a million for the mock, a half a million for future saltwater canal-type projects. We also, outside of this fund, have another million into the streets improvement fund to help with the pavement program.
Right, okay. Thank you for that explanation.
I had a, I had a question about the, I'm assuming the, the water wastewater rates revenue that we're applying to this is specific because the capital projects that apply to those portions of the utility will be drawing down at that point? Is that, is that why these revenues are reducing here?
So the split between rates and capacity is because your impact fees, even for water and wastewater, can't pay for the full portion of the mock part, right? So your existing share is what's coming from the rates.
Okay, but the reason why it's slightly increasing for several years and then decreasing is because of the cost share?
Yes, that is correct.
Their cost share is now being exhausted, essentially?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any other questions on the capital projects fund before we move on? So we next move to the streets improvement fund, and there's two sources of revenue in this fund. The first one is the local option fuel tax. There's six cents per gallon for gas that's purchased in Flagler County, comes to the city on a distribution ratio put into local agreement. It's based on how many miles of road we maintain. So we do get a good portion of that in the city, and it's restricted to transportation expenditures. The second source of revenue is state revenue sharing. So it's a portion of the state sales tax and use tax collections and the one cent municipal fuel tax. So we get a portion of that. So you can see those, those revenue sources here, those first two line items. So these go up very small increment every year. And, you know, this is, we bring this up every year, you know, the cost of the improvements, whether it's paving or rehabbing our existing traffic signals or building a new signal is much, the cost increases much more than the revenue increases. So we do less and less every year because the revenue is not increasing as well. So there's a, the other revenue is primarily interest, inter-fund transfers, that million dollars, that, again, that's coming from the fund balance for this year. And then the fund balance appropriation is just the same as answer as the last time. It's funds within this fund that are being, that are being utilized in next year's budget for expenses. So on the operating expenses, you know, the biggest line item in here is our street rehabilitation renewal program. There's some big dollars in here for '26, our current contract for paving, I believe comes to council next week. So that's going to do Palm Coast Parkway from 95 to US1. It's also going to extend the turn lane onto Pine Lakes Parkway. It's gonna look, it's gonna extend a turn lane over by Corporate Drive and the hospital to get rid of that glass, grass area.
That turn lane is the St. Joe Plaza area.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
We get a lot of feedback on that. We looked into it, so we built it into that. Correct. So that, more than likely, we won't start construction until October timeframe, so that's why we moved all those dollars to next year's suite. Theoretically, we have next year's project and this year's project that's going to occur next year, as well as a million dollars in global treatment. Our traffic signals line item is rehabbing. We did four span wire rehabs this year, and we have four more to do next year. That already came to council for approval, so that'll, that'll get constructed here based on lead time on material and whatnot. They'll start here in October. Then there's some miscellaneous line items in here. We have a little bit of street lighting to wrap up, finishing up our tier roadways. And then we have a little bit of money set aside for our bridge rehab, so as we get our bridge inspection report, some DOT, we can go do, perform some work as needed. And then we have, you know, in our street rehab, we also have some guard rail and striping and miscellaneous. The bulk of that is the resurfacing and global treatments. Any questions on the street improvement fund?
I have a question, a budgeting question regarding, we as council decided we wanted to have an inventory done of the turn lanes. Is that in this budget or is that in general fund budget? Where is that, City Manager?
We did in our transportation impact fee fund, and I'll call that out. You know, I'm kind of... I'm kind of jumping the gun, I guess, but we did, it looks like the TPO is going to fund now analyzing 15 of those intersections. I don't know the dollar amount yet, but we, it looks like that is going to be funded. But we did include and identified all the intersections that are on in material throughout the city and we are looking at purchasing a camera to take the counts and collecting all that data internally within house staff. So we, even though the TPO do 15, our intent is to do all of them. So we can have the data there and analyze it and prioritize it.
Okay, and then similar question for looking at streetlight timing. Do we know, and obviously council hasn't directed staff to do anything like that just yet, but do we know what something like that could cost for the purposes of budgeting for next year?
We, we, we have not identified that. Our intent is to do that in-house. We have done it in-house in the past. We, we do it now to a point, but if we're going to establish a brand new coordination plan for an entire corridor, then we would probably want to use a consultant for that. Or we may do it in-house depending on, you know, transportation engineers are fairly unique individuals. You know, there's really three priority areas. You can do, you know, capacity analysis and modeling. You can do your, your signal optimization and operation type discipline and then you can do your roadway design, you know, capital project. So you know, our, depends on which engineer we have at the time, what their primary focus is and their background is, is you never find someone that has strength in all three areas. So right now, our traffic engineer is very strong in construction inspection, materials, roadway design, you know, capital project. We have a lot of those coming up. So that's his primary background. We are looking potentially to fill a slot that we reclassified within the department to bring in an engineer that's got that signal optimization background. So that's really what we're going to seek. So we can do all this in-house and not have to contract it all out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a quick question. Carl, just to follow on what the vice mayor asked with regards to the turn lanes, I just want to confirm that assess me is on one of the turn lanes that we're going to assess?
Yeah, I don't remember the 15 that were turned into DOT, but I believe that was one of the 15 that we submitted in our application to them.
Okay, thank you. I know the stansels and others have brought that to our attention multiple times. I just want to make sure it's on the list.
Yeah.
Assess, all right, thank you.
Just had another question in regards to the, since we're on the topic, the traffic signals at Matanzas exit and whether we've made any progress through FDOT with that. I know that's been in process for a while.
Yeah, I know they've approved it and it's just a matter of them putting it in their budget. You know, sometimes they call it push button projects. I haven't heard of them having the dollars set aside for that project yet. I know Fong is on the TPO committee and has more contact with DOT on those specifics, but I haven't heard that a date yet that it is funded in their proceeding.
Okay, thank you.
So now we're going to get into our impact fund revenues and we've talked a lot about these this year with all our impact fee studies that we've done. And these, you know, just as a reminder, these are restricted to growth related projects only. They only can be used for projects that are adding new capacity. They can't be used for the existing system deficiencies or operations. There's the Transportation Impact Fee Fund, Recreation Impact Fee and the Fire Impact Fee that we're going to cover tonight. So this is the Transportation Impact Fee Fund. So you can see that that top item are the projected revenues that will come in from the transportation impact fees based on the most recent study. Developer infrastructure contribution, those are, sometimes we have, we get contributions as part of a project through development agreements. Sometimes they, we get developer impact fee credits and they construct some of those improvements. Sometimes they are, have to pay into a fund and we come back, say it's a sidewalk fund or something else and we're using those funds when we actually proceed with those improvements and we construct them. Other revenues are interest, grants. You can see there's a lot of grants in here. These also include our state appropriations that we receive for our various projects, whether it's Belter, White View, Matanzas, you know, numerous grant projects, Grand Swamp Trail Design is in here. And then our expenditures. So, you know, the operating expenditures that included our impact fee study, I don't recall those other items now, but you can see they're not very big items throughout here. I think we have 810,000. That includes the study of those intersections in this coming budget. So whatever the TPO doesn't fund, we'll collect the data, we'll send it off to a consultant. They'll analyze it, do a warrant study for adding turn lanes, extending turn lanes, stop signs, signal. They're going to analyze it for all those items to see which ones make the most sense or which one meets the criteria to make those improvements. Oak Kings Road South Design, that's the, that's a project, you know, from Town Center, heading all the way up to basically Utility Drive. And that is this portion. I think there's five different funds paying for that. So that, that's underway. Council's already approved that that's just dollars being spent this year and next year for that project. Oak Kings Road Winding, that's the state appropriation project. We anticipate going out to construction sometime early next calendar year and beginning construction. Right now we're waiting on FPL to finish up a design of relocating a transmission pole. That's basically right in the middle of the right of way. So they're going to have to add a pole on each side of the right of way. So we can actually add those additional two lanes.
Carl, this is the phase two?
Phase two, basically from the bowling alley up to about Big Melbury Creek.
Yeah, somewhere.
Seminole Woods State Road 100, that $350,000, that's what Fong just presented to you guys recently. Those are the county impact fees coming to the city to, to begin that project, do a study, start the design. And then we have some future dollars to make those improvements set aside so we can proceed. We'll also seek grant funding on those or DOT funding to help offset those costs. They did help with the last turn lane improvement project we did there. It was primarily FDOT dollars that paid for that. Seminole Woods Improvement, you can see those, we identified some turn lanes in the future. We know that there's need for turn lanes, not just assess me, but there's probably going to be some other ones that come up through that analysis. We have some dollars in that end of the five-year plan for that. Belter State Road 100 is also another one that's going to need improvement. Those intersections, that's what that's for. Belter Safety Improvements, that's coming to you next week. So you'll see that contract to do all those safety improvements, basically from Royal Palms up to Pritchard. A lot of turn lanes, restricted movements, primarily turn lane, yes. Belter Citation Boulevard Intersection. So that's, that's another area that we know has been identified as an area that's going to need some enhancements there with all those developments and the connection of Citation to Belter and Seminole Woods now. We're anticipating a need for improvements. White View is started construction. So that's, you know, one that was recently awarded by council. So that is moving forward. We have White View Parkway Extension. Those dollars are just really for some right of way to continue extending White View West potentially in the future. There's a development that's proceeding there. So we're working with them while they're developing so we can coordinate, you know, our future needs with them. So they're, they're working very well with us through planning. Matanzas Bird of Paradise. Again, we know, we know that's a, that's an intersection that's been failing for, for a long time. We purchased him right away the last couple of years, I think four residential lots. And knowing that the funding for the forelaning isn't going to happen anytime soon through DOT, it's not in their five-year work program. We know we're probably going to have to make those improvements at that intersection sooner than later. So we did program some dollars there for that intersection. Matanzas Woods Forelaning, you know, we're, we're hoping that, you know, portion, or at least the first phase of that project will be able to proceed in the future. Again, what we're going to continue to see, it's on the DOT work program list right now. Matanzas Woods Parkway Phase Two, that's moving forward over the tracks. And 2A and 3 and 4, all those projects are really the state appropriation, you know, with the Loop Road from Matanzas West and then come, connect them back up with Palm Coast Parkway. And then we come down to traffic signals and interfund transfers. And so those are really for impact fees that come in that are dedicated to an area like the Old Kings Road Special Assessment District and the impact fees collected in Town Center also are set aside for projects within Town Center. So both of those are transferred out to other funds that we can cover here in a moment. So any questions on this fund?
I have a couple of questions. In 2028, we're anticipating a jump in the impact fee revenues to almost double what all the other years are reading. Why is that?
That came from, from planning with some projected projects that are in the pipeline. They're expected to be completed in that timetable. I want to say there was a couple of restaurants and there was another large project that was going to generate quite a bit of impact fees. So I think that's like the worst case scenario. They could come in sooner, but they, they know they're in the pipeline. So they're projecting those dollars to come in.
Okay, and then the fund balance contingency reserve, are those monies that are coming into the impact fee funds and then literally just holding steady there? Or there is, is that a transfer in for contingencies?
No, there, there are dollars within the fund. Those are just programmed every year to, to true up the expenses, the revenue with the expenses. So there's additional dollars in that fund that carry over and as needed to match up with expenses, we plug those in that particular year.
Thank you.
So the Town Center Transportation.
I did have a question.
No, go ahead.
In terms of the Old Kings Road South Design, right? So we approved that design project. I think during the time though, we did ask for engineering to work on maybe a temporary solution to that, that Town Center and Royal Palms stop. I was just wondering where we're at with that.
They, they are getting real close. They had to collect some additional later data because the initial data that we collected as staff did not have turning movements in it. So in order to make a true analysis on what, what potential stacking might occur, you know, our concern is if we put in a three-way stop there, we don't want traffic to back up to Old Kings Road. So we, they're, they're going to continue that analysis. They are near completion. So we should have that fairly soon.
Thank you for bringing that up because I was actually over there today and thinking, oh boy, this neighborhood's going in quick. Yeah.
Well, that plus schools back, right? So have the issue with.
Imagine, yeah. Sorry, I did have one more question. So again, I'm looking at 2028, the fund balance contingency reserve jumps way up to 13 million. Why is that?
I'm just looking at the particular projects in here.
It looks like there's a trickle down because we don't anticipate spending that. That's, I just can't figure it out. No.
Yeah, I, I would have to double check that particular one because the 25 million in Matanzas is being spent, right, per grant because those two segments are fully funded by the state. So yeah, that 13 million contingency reserve, I'm not certain what that would be.
Save it for Helena. If she steps back in, I think she's under the weather. She probably does.
Yeah, and I asked.
I, I agree. It's on expense. So that's going into the reserve. That's excess revenue that's coming in that we're putting into the, the fund reserve.
She's shaking her head, yes.
Okay, okay. So then, then where's that money coming from?
Those are the impact fees. We're collecting 15 million impact fees and we're only spending about two, you know, 2 million of it because the rest of it's are matching up with grants.
So, okay, do we not have any other projects then that, because I'm looking at other, for instance, I think we just went through something in the CIP that I, we could possibly use with impact fees. So I'm just trying to make sure we're using the impact fees to the fullest extent possible.
I, I think because of that was such a big jump in impact fees and they're not guaranteed, we didn't want to commit to a project knowing that we may or may not get all those revenues that, you know, almost double revenues that year. So we will plug in a project if, if they are permitting that project and we know it's going to be CO whether they pay the impact fees upfront or not. As we, you know, we do next year's budget, we'll have a better idea. We'll definitely, we'll move projects up. We don't, you know, if we have the funds and we know we have plenty of projects to proceed with, we don't want to just bank that money for no reason.
Okay. I hope with all of the information I store, I don't forget this slide because I'm also, when I look at the fund balance contingency and I look at, well, we look at contracts that come before us for increases, for whatever reasons. They find a pipe or, you know, whatever may happen where they come and they increase the price. If we could stop that or mitigate it, we could spend so much more money on more projects and be so much more productive with these fees. So I just issue a challenge to staff to really, you know, make sure that when, when contracts do come back to us because they've gone through their contingency, they're asking for more money for whatever reason, let's really try to hold the line on stuff like that. Because when I look at these contingencies down here, this is millions of dollars that could be used to improve our roads and it, it's important that we use these monies the best way possible. So just kind of a, a challenge to staff. Thank you.
So if I may, when we have that fund balance contingency reserve, we're actually adding unspent funds to contingency, not to project contingencies. So they would add to the fund balance and they will roll over to the next year. And then you'll see it the following year as appropriated fund balance if we're using the funds.
I understand. Thank you.
So our Town Center Transformation Impact Fee Fund, these are the impact fees collected within Town Center. We do have some expenses in here for that design of, you know, that end portion of Royal Palms Parkway to Old Kings Road. That, that is part of this fund. Then we, we get into the Recreation Impact Fee Fund. So you can see these are based on the, the new impact fees. We show just over $3 million a year coming in. We have some grants, primarily in this year, we have the Long Creek Grant. I believe that's what those funds are coming in. And then next year, we have the Waterfront Park Grants. Interfund transfers, that's existing citizen share portion of those capacity improvement projects. And as we work our way down, the operating expenses where the impact fee studies, the Lehigh Trailhead, we have a little bit of trail connectivity to do, but we were waiting on the St. John's River Water Management District for some conservation easement release. So we're still working on that before we can finish up that, that piece of the work. Our Long Creek Nature Preserve was the boardwalk. That was part of that grant funded that finished up this year. And then in the future, we have those remaining improvements that are tied to the grant that we received from the state for that project, for the nature center primarily is most of the remaining work there. Grand Swamp Trail in '26, we have, that's a DOT grant that was recently approved by council to do the design from the Old Kings Road Trailhead at Grand Swamp down to Lehigh Trail. The Community Center Expanded Parking, we have dollars next year to do the design of Fire Station 22 to, so then in '27, we can make the improvements of the expanded parking as well as the rehab of the existing fire station. Our Cultural Arts Facility, we have some dollars here for our existing arts, stage location within Town Center to look at enhancements there of how we may connect that site with the potential future Y. Whether we cover the stage, I think was the next plan and have some connectivity there between both projects. So we want to do some early planning efforts. So we're coordinating and collaborating on the ultimate use and layout of that site. Waterfront Park Access, that's to expand the parking at Waterfront Park and to add a covered pavilion on the existing concrete slab. Southern Recreation Facility Phase One and Two, we still have some dollars for next year. We, we have an FPL agreement that will be coming to council to approve the use of having that parking in the easement. And we're looking at doing some expansion of some parking with those remaining dollars there. And Indian Trail Sports Complex Parking Expansion. So this was one from several years ago when we converted those two multi-use fields over to four baseball slash softball fields. We added lighting this year. Next year, our intent is to expand that parking. So that, those are dollars in there for that. We have some future dollars for adding lighting over at the Buddy Taylor, Buddy, I apologize, Indian Trail. over at the Buddy Taylor, Buddy, I apologize, Indian Trails Middle School. So that we have a field in the middle of the track and two fields behind it. So I'd be adding lighting to those fields. So we have more night use field availability.
These are the multi-use, the rectangular fields.
Rectangular fields, yes, behind Indian Trails Middle School. We have the Aquatic Center. We put the $3 million in here, 2 million next year and a million the following year for city portion towards that project. And then we have some interfund transfers. This is to take care of some past projects that were either paid from a different fund, just to cover, true up the actual costs on projects between impact fees and existing citizen share. Any questions on the Recreation Impact Fee Fund?
I have a couple. So I'm looking at the trend that you said existed for the impact fee revenues for transportation and that it should consistently increase and then it's supposed to go way up in 2028 because of anticipated development. But I don't see that same trend for recreation and fire. Now, I understand recreation impact fees are only residential, but fire are not. So why are we not seeing similar trends?
Well, recreation, correct. Those additional expenses were non-residential project expenses. So that didn't go up here. I'd have to go back to fire here. Did we?
It stays flat for fire. Fire is up ahead. So I am jumping, but I'm talking about them at the same time. So but you see, fire is flat. So I'm wondering why we're not seeing the same trends.
Right. Yeah. We'd have to get that information from planning. We can plug that in there.
Yeah, I think that's really important. So, you know, to make sure we're being as accurate as possible in order to budget. So if you all could please bring that back to us, I'd appreciate it, City Manager. And then my other question specific to recreation, we continue to have an issue with rectangular fields. So, you know, access, not having enough space. I don't see it anywhere on here. I know it's in the Parkmaster Plan.
It's, yeah, the problem that we have is we don't have our existing situation match. So I think it's the 46.71% that we have to fund some way and we don't have a way to fund it. So it's hard to build. You can see we're building up quite a balance. Oh, well, you don't see the balance here, but our expense, we're bringing in more revenue than expenses because we don't have the match.
I see. So that was going to be my next question. We've got this reserve down here. What is, do you know offhand what the match is or about what it would be?
Well, one, we need to find land of where we build these additional fields. So whether we have to purchase land or whether we, you know, that would be the first step. And then after that, I think it's in our six to 10-year plan, but we have, you know, additional funds. I don't remember the dollars. I'd have to go back and look at that, but it's not cheap. I think between the land and building it out, we're talking 15 to 20 million, I think. So the citizen portion would be like 9 million, 8, 9 million.
Okay, thank you.
Fire Impact Fee Fund. So obviously, you know, we know 22 Replacement Station and '26 are underway now. Impact fees here, you know, aren't huge, you know, just over a million dollars a year. We did bring in quite a other funds into here to make these projects happen. We did get grants. We did interfund transfers where we had some payback of the CRA dollars. You know, with the 22 Replacement Station, I wanted, it was quite a bit of non-capacity dollars that had to pay for that because based on the existing acreage of the site and the square foot of the building, that couldn't be used for capacity. Then we had to do the existing capacity match for existing citizens on the new station. So there wasn't a lot of capacity fees that could be used for the 22 Replacement Station. We do have, towards the end, you can see 23 expansion would be to add a bay to that station and do some rehab work to bring it in line for, you know, firefighter safety and operational efficiency of that station while we had that bay on there. So that's what those dollars are in the future. Any any questions on the Fire Impact Fee Fund? Okay, so next we move into the State Road 100 CRA. That's really the Town Center area here. You can see we have two portions of revenue. We have the intergovernment revenue, the county portion that comes in, just over $2 million a year. And then we have the city portion of that tax increment of just over a million dollars a year. We do have some operating expenses. We do have some debt service as well. You can see that debt falls off in '28. I think last year we paid off our, one of the loans and then in '28, we ended up paying off the second one. Those interfund transfers, those are to cover various projects and and programs. Some of that is the Lehigh Trailhead and Southern Rec Center because those projects were within the CRA. So the CRA can pay the existing citizen's share of the project. So that's how we're able to provide that match for those projects. And this also has an incentive program for the prepayment of the utility impact fees. So this is basically paying back the the utility fund or actually not paying back, but paying those impact fees and moving those dollars to the utility water and wastewater CIAC funds. We do have some dollars programmed in here in '26 and '27 to pave Town Center Boulevard. So our hope is that we can start paving some of those roads. And then towards the end of the five-year plan, our goal would be to pay some additional roads within Town Center with these funds as well. And then I think we had in here too for the project over at the Cultural Arts Facility or, you know, the Art Center with the Y. This fund can also pay the existing citizen's share of putting a roof over that and making some connectivity to the Y facility as well. There's any questions on this fund? So Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. So, oh, go ahead. '26 and '27, that includes the paving of the road. And then we pave roads again in '29 and '30. So those were those big, yes.
And the CRA is set to sunset in 2032, right? 2032 or 2034?
I think it's 34.
34, sorry.
Old Kings Road Special Assessment Fund. So this is the area, you know, pretty much on Old Kings Road South from basically Utility Drive down to State Road 100. You can see there's an assessment in here and that's to to collect back the original funds, funding of the first phase of Old Kings Road winding from Town Center Boulevard to State Road 100. There are some grants in here. We did receive a DOT grant for that design and study of the portion of roadway that's that's being looked at now that's under design with. Interfund transfers, those are the impact fees. So when projects are constructed within this district, the first thing they do is they pay back the dollars owed on their loan for that particular project. Any additional impact fees after their debt is reconciled goes into this fund. So we project, you know, that $100,000 per year to come in based on development within that district. So that that changes as development occurs. So right now, you can see the design is using up a chunk of those dollars and then there's not a ton of money building up. Our goal would be, I think, that the first phase is to construct that phase two way of the project. But unless a major development occurs and we collect some big dollars in impact fees, you know, it'll be a while before that happens. So now we can move on to the Stormwater Capital. So charges for services. So that's our stormwater fee that's collected. We do have some ad valorem taxes that are contributed to this fund. We'd have some grants, primarily this current year that are in here. And we have loan proceeds and other revenues. So we move into projects. So we.
We go back, sorry. The ad valorem taxes.
Yes.
I bring this up every year. I have a big problem with us transferring ad valorem taxes into stormwater because we have stormwater fees. So why is it the stormwater fund does not operate on stormwater fees?
Yeah, I dug into this a little bit. I went back to the 2011 study that was done, I believe it was PBS and J or RSNH. I can't remember the acronym. But it was done by an engineering firm and I went through that and talked to the rate consultant that was involved in the studies in the past. And my understanding is those dollars were to offset exempt properties, like federal properties within it. There's also developments that don't pay a stormwater fee because they discharge directly to like the intercoastal. So they don't pay a stormwater fee. And then there's other properties that get discounted rates, you know, if it's ag or other other portions. But even those are the ones that are exempt, say they don't pay a stormwater fee. We don't charge for like our roadways and all that stormwater goes into our system. So I think this was just a way to address those items. I couldn't find a calculation of how they came up with this dollar amount. But that's that's just my understanding of how that was established.
That was going to be my next question is, are these actuals or are we just using some arbitrary percentage that gets transferred every year?
Yeah. I knew it was around 500,000 years ago and I think we have a small increase per year that we've been using.
Point zero two, I think, is what was included in the rate study as the increase. I think the reasoning behind it was for the exempt properties, but also there really, there really isn't a lot of growth in those exempt properties. So they calculated a 0.02% increase every year and that's what was kept. Now, we certainly have it on our radar at the next rate study to really dig into. Do you even want to continue doing that? And do you want to recalculate it based on what's exempt currently in the city?
Yeah, I don't want to. I don't want to do it this year. I'll be honest. I mean, I have an issue. I voiced this last year. I don't think that our ad valorem unrestricted monies should be transferred into stormwater when we have stormwater fees for that. And if we did transfer this, it needs to be based on an actual calculation of the exempted properties. I mean, I'm looking at this money. This is half a million dollars. Councilman Miller, this could pay for your library that you were concerned about. I mean, you know, there's a couple hundred thousand dollars that we were talking about for other projects that we could use these monies for. So probably too late in the game to make a change at this point because we'll throw a wrench in stormwaters budget for 2026. But I would like consensus from this council at this point to looking ahead, get actuals of exempted properties rather than just doing a percentage so that these monies that are coming from our property taxes can be used for other priorities that we decide on.
Well, we'd have to, I just chime in for a minute. We'd probably also have to get rate consultant involved because we have loan coverage requirements based on our revenue. So we'd have to see what impact that reduced revenue would have on our loan coverage to make sure we're not, you know, out of compliance if we cut that revenue off.
I fully believe that in being prudent, that's the right thing to do. But with a stormwater budget of 43,557,785, I don't know that 500,000 will.
Well, that includes a loan that year.
Sure. No, I understand what your point is, but I think this is still doable. So can I get from consensus from council to at least have this looked at for 2026?
Yeah, let's have that conversation.
2027.
I mean, 2027, yeah, fiscal year 27. You're right. Sorry.
Yeah.
Is that, sorry, is that when we're due for another rate study since we approved the stormwater rate study in 2022?
Well, I think we were passed with 10 years.
Okay. Yeah, the last time we did a rate study, you did not want us to come back for 10 years.
This was in '22?
Yes.
Okay. Different group of people now. I would also, you know, as part of this, I'd like to understand stormwater exemptions in general and what the statutory requirements of that are. It seems to me everybody should be participating in stormwater. Obviously, there's some laws that dictate how that works and I'd like to know more about that.
How is this even added to their ad valorem tax bill?
It's not. It's just some of the the taxes that are collected. It's just a transfer from the general fund.
So essentially, we're socializing the gap in stormwater fees throughout the entire city.
Correct.
Because of the exemptions.
Right.
If you look at, you know, the overall ad valorem taxes that we bring in as a whole, what is it, 60? Was it 69 this year? I mean, it started out, you know, 43 and it moves on. I mean, stormwater budget is almost, you know, as much as we bring in ad valorem taxes. And I think we just need to take a look at it, especially after, you know, hard choices we had to make as a councilor.
Yeah, we'll make sure we start early in the fiscal year to do that analysis and and have some discussions at least with the rate consultant and just get some high level and analysis and bring that back to you guys.
Thank you, Carl.
And just that grant for 1.25 million is actually the state appropriation for the P1 Weir Replacement that's under construction now in Belt Air just south of Whiteview.
I saw a video on that.
Yes. So you can see our five-year plan, our operating expenditures is just over $11 million. So that that covers, you know, across the board, you know, all the cost for the stormwater department. Then we move down to the various capital projects. You can see there's the storage detention. We have some dollars allocated here for various projects. Some of them aren't identified yet because we're doing analysis. You know, we're doing three or four studies now. So we know we'll proceed with some of those in the future. We have London Waterway Phase One, that that was completed. We have Weir Projects, that's P1 Weir. We have future W1 Weir. That's our last major Weir facility. Major pipe and canal crossings, those, you know, again, a lot of that has to do with our pipelining, but there also are pipe replacements as well. Capacity improvements. So those are in line with our stormwater storage detention multiple projects as well. So adding those capacity improvements, you know, we talked about the Fire Station 23 site, Dry Lake, B1, B2, 3 pop off. We talked about that. So we have, you know, double L section, the K section improvements happening now. Then we have regular pipe replacements. So that's what's done in-house by staff. So those are the expenses associated with the city's pipe replacement program, asphalt maintenance, rehab and renewal. Again, those are costs associated with sod and expenses that the city has for that work. You can see we had a big jump next year. We did set aside some dollars to do contract work to help us with some of the backlog. We did contract that out this year to our bidder. He did terminate his contract. He indicated he was not able to perform that work and didn't want to proceed with more work with the city. So he didn't finish his whole contract that we had, his pilot program we had for this year. He did a two or three weeks worth of work and then left.
So we're back to doing it 100% in-house.
So we're doing 100% internally. Yes. Our ditch maintenance and rehab, again, that's, those are costs associated with doing rehab, expenses we have with rehabbing our ditch. Our weed control, that's contracted services for our aquatic management contract. Our freshwater canal maintenance, again, that's our internal crew. These are expenses associated with maintaining our freshwater canal, freshwater canal dredging. That is, I think, just upstream of the P1 Weir, where dredging that canal west that's underway right now, being completed. Then we have debt service. So we have various past loans and the current loan and we have a future loan that's identified in '27. So those are payments on those loans. And then we have transfers to other funds for new equipment. So that's primarily in '25, we had new equipment as part of the loan purchase for some of the new programs. Moving forward, those are replacement items. So those are just dollars we set aside each year to replace equipment. And then you have the transfer to the MOC. Any questions on the stormwater?
The transfer to the MOC is for their portion of the facility that they'll be utilizing, correct?
Correct. So next we'll. So next, we'll, we'll cover utility. And I know this was one of the most recent ones that, that council has seen. So I probably won't, and there's a lot of projects here. So I probably will go through this fairly quickly. And if you have questions, you know, we can easily get into the specifics on those. But you can see there's, there's various impact fees. There's water and wastewater. And those are shown in the first two line items. Then we have interest. We have the Old Kings Road Special Assessment interest that's collected that we talked about on that original loan. We have transfers for R and R. So that's, those are the dollars from rates that are set aside for R and R enhancements. Then we had utility fund balance. So as part of the rate study, they contemplated having 8 million put towards those projects. It was really an R and R. The Kickstart Program, we mentioned that in the Town Center CRA. So those, that's incentive program of those impact fees that are due for those incentivized projects. And these are the impact fees that are due from that fund. So we show those revenues coming in. We had ARPA funding, funding Old Kings Road Force Main Project. So it's under construction now. So you've seen that big pipe that's been bored along Old Kings Road. They're doing the tie-ins now, connection points. We do have some ARPA money from the county for a couple of projects. We had the water project, and then we have, also have the wastewater project going up A1A. First phase is Malacumpra, and then there's a DEP grant through the county as well to continue that up to Marineland. We had state appropriations received for purchase of land for a rib site. Then we had state appropriations for a system equalizer tank, and then some dollars towards AWT conversion. And then we have some debt proceeds. So we, we have, the first one is SRF loan tied to our wastewater treatment plant, two expansion. And I think there's $3,026 for that. And then the balance of that is the proposed bond to primarily fund wastewater treatment plant one expansion, but it's also water projects, R and R projects, various projects that are identified in the CIP.
Carl, real quick, on, on the state appropriations, the system, the EQ tank, the 2,500, that's the state appropriations that we got from the state this year.
Yeah, the 2.5 million.
Okay. So as I look at this, you know, I'm super interested to see when, when we can get that thing up and running. I know I talked about it with the utility director earlier this week. But what, we, that's going to give our citizens relief, you know, from, from the water intrusion and flow, and, and give some relief also to, to wastewater treatment plant one, is it?
Correct. Wastewater Plant One is also going to have an EQ tank on site. Right now, we have started modeling our entire system for water, wastewater and raw water and reclaim. You know, we need to finish that and perform a master plan so they can help us identify what and where and how much, you know, this should go. You know, it could be, maybe we just build a bigger EQ tank at the plant site. Maybe it's something on the spray field. It could be something within the city network of, we also, you know, we need to own the land and where is it best makes sense. We know the Old Kings Road Force Main Project is really going to help, you know, the P section where we do have the, you know, those current issues. Because right now it's restricted on getting over to the plant. So once that is completed up and running. But that is a definite project that, you know, is one of our top priorities.
Okay. But right now, it looks like, as far as execution, you know,
It'll be at least a year before we probably know what and where it can go.
Okay. So, so for the, our citizens that are listening on this EQ tank, and those that have been following this issue, it'll, it won't be until fiscal year 27 that we can actually get that thing up and running.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm understanding.
That'd be my best guess right now. We just don't want to place it in a spot. We want to strategically put it in the best spot that, you know, throughout the system.
Oh, so it supports the whole system. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Carl, these figures are based on a bond amount of how much?
I think we take 3 million off of that. So it'd be 283, 394 plus fees. So those are the capital portion of the, that's the capital portion of the project. And then the fees for the bond are added on top of that.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that, you know, when we worked on the rates, you know, there was an interest from the board to ensure that when we receive appropriations or cost savings in terms of construction, things like that, that we keep track of that. And we're able to potentially make a decision about reducing the rate increases if there's enough cost savings. Also, as you mentioned, reducing the, the bonding that's required if we're finding other sources of funds. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind going forward, that, at least from my standpoint, there's going to be an interest in bringing this up at some point and, and capturing what those savings were, what the other appropriations we got, so that our citizens don't have to pay for it.
Right. The AWT conversion was a project we, we did not fund because that was in the second bond. So that was, that's not, that, those are not helping us in regard to rates. But the system EQ tank would be. And then we have, on the future debt proceeds, those are dollars potentially tied to future impact fee increases. So those aren't guaranteed revenue. Those, those are just identified on what we potentially could have in additional impact fees in the future. So you can see down, that's, those are the revenues. And then you can see on the expenses, utility, R and R fund. You know, we have more projects than we have revenue on. We, we have a lot of, you know, we talked about this with the older projects. We have Water Plant One where we're doing, wrapping up some pilot studies. We have an additional pilot study there. So a lot of work to do on Water Plant One. We do have some additional work on Water Plant Two as well. That needs quite a bit of our rehab work as well. So our, our water system improvements, those are our capacity projects. So we're working on some current projects, Water Plant Two, you know, ground storage tank and some other work. Then we have design that's underway at Water Plant Three with future initial capacity would be funded by bond. And then the future improvement would be funded by rates in the future or impact fees. Wastewater capacity, you can see primarily those, a lot of those dollars, those big dollars you, you see there are really wastewater plant one expansion. And then transfer to Maintenance Operations Center. So again, you saw that earlier. And R and R, we do, are doing a little bit of work on the AWT, you know, tied to the plant rehab right now. So this just goes a little further breakdown on the water cap, you know, capital projects. You can see the various projects. We have quite a few wells. We have two wells under construction now that will be wrapping up this calendar year. We have two more wells, the Goodwill and Commerce Drive well that are going out to bid. We have 24 and 25 that are under design right now. So we have quite a few wells. We're also doing some exploration on, on those wells. But in our R and R fund, you know, we talked about how the wells lose capacity every year. So we, we did a bunch this year. We did come up with our long range plan. And part of the impact fee increase or the rate increase covered providing more dollars to R and R so we could rehab more wells to add or bring back the capacity that we lost.
Carl, going back to revenue.
Yes.
And maybe you touched on this and I missed it. The, why do we see such a drop from 2025 in the impact fee to '26?
In '25, we received $2 million in each fund for our Old Kings Road South project from FGUA. So that, as they bring customers on, they have to purchase an increment of capacity. So that was their initial payment. So that was some additional capacity. We also know permits are, are dropping, declining. So that, you know, you take off that 2 million and then we're, we're not, we're just a little bit less than what we collected this year.
So in terms of permitting, obviously, these impact fees, we didn't adjust because that was done in the previous study.
Correct. There, there's an, May 1st, there's an annual increment increase. One of them was increased over two years, and another one was increased over four years based on the percent increase. So I think that water, I don't remember which, which one is which, to be honest. But I don't think we can raise impact fees till May 1st of '28 again.
Yeah, I was just, in my head, I was saying, oh, we doubled them. So unless permitting is dropping by 50%, then we should have still more revenue. But this is a different impact fee. So this is not what
We did a 12 and a half percent per year in one of them and 25% in the, in the other one.
Okay. Yeah, I was just mostly thinking, well, if we double
Per year, yeah.
We should get increases. We didn't, we didn't get a chance to do this one yet.
Right. We didn't do extraordinary circumstance. So we didn't go over 50% in this particular one back, back when it was done. So it did, this one did not double. This lays out the various water capital projects. And, you know, I touched upon a lot of the well projects that are in here. Then we get into wastewater. You can see the big dollars are the wastewater plant one expansion. And there's various other projects tied to reclaim water, ground storage tank. That, that is also critical as part of our expansion project to have that place to put reclaim, especially during our wet weather. And then we have some of the various county projects, you know, and the ARPA funded projects that we, we put in here as well. So that, that covers utility. Any questions on the utility?
You had mentioned the ARPA funded projects. So these are good because we've either contracted them prior to the end of last year? Is that the reason why they're still?
Yeah, they had to be under contract for a certain date. And I think we had to spend the dollars by December of 2026.
Okay.
And then there's one of those projects, it's a DEP grant, has a different timetable to it, the, the Phase Two Force Main along A1A.
Carl, I've got a quick question.
Yes.
As I think of us rolling into hurricane season or we're in it, you know, one of the, one of the, the saviors of water backing up and, I mean, it backed up into people's homes. But one of the things that we were able to try to mitigate was, was it the 24 pump trucks that we had going around and pulling water out of the, out of the lift stations that didn't have any power to, to, to push water, you know, or effluent into the system. And so when we look at contingency funding, I mean, do we have enough to, to cover down on that, that specific issue if we have to execute that contract?
Yeah. I believe the pumping is part of the utility operating budget. And I do believe they do have some dollars set aside because we, we typically do some pumping every year.
Okay. Just want to make sure as we, you know, go through this season and certainly
Depending on the event, some of that is reimbursable at the end of the day.
That is correct.
Five years later, right?
Yes, it does take a few years.
More.
Yeah. So, okay. I just, I wanted to touch on that because that was, that was a really important, well-planned, you know, contingency operation that really helped out our, our community. So, thank you.
And, you know, one thing I didn't mention, you know, one thing that does help too is we've been doing some I and I analysis and studies. And the bond, we did put quite a bit of money in the '26 budget for pipelining and sewer lining. Utility did do some manhole cover ceiling over in the woodlands, especially on that, that Black Alder Road. I believe it's Black Alder, Black something. So I know Stormwater's been working with utility on trying to address some of those areas where there is water over the roads and, and looking in those things. Thank you.
Carl, one more question.
Yes.
Since we're on the topic of, of projects, and you just mentioned pipelining, the, we had approved the, the Belt Air North, I believe it's pipelining for storm water. Is that correct?
Yes.
Can you just give an update on, on where that is?
Yeah. I, I did ask for an update. The, the person that's running that project was off last week. So I, I don't have a full update on timing. I believe I did hear, I don't know the percent complete, but the goal was that they would be done by October 1st.
Okay. And, you know, when we approved that, we had talked about ensuring that we were kind of out of the way of the schools. It appears to me, based on the, the execution of this so far, that they've been doing all the work from the north end. So they're not in front of the schools. They're blocking a lane of traffic while they're working and things like that. Is that correct?
I, yeah, I don't know all the segments that have been completed. I'd have to get back to you on that. I know they were doing some work at night as well on some of those areas. So I don't know the timing of the lane closures. But I know the last time when we did do some lane closures by the school, we were able to coordinate that. So it didn't really impact the traffic flow.
Gotcha. Yeah. I mean, so I live in that area. So I go by there all the time. And I've only ever seen, kind of adjacent to the fire station, that area where they've been working. Everything else seems to be open the whole way through. So I'm assuming that they're, they're entering the pipes through that north end and then doing the work underneath towards the south.
Yeah. I, I'll get some more information and get, get you some more specifics on, on how that's working in the sequencing and making sure we're coordinating with the school on any potential impacts.
Okay. Yeah, I was just concerned because I only saw that north end under work. So I was hoping, hoping that we don't have to move back down in front of the schools at a later date to finish up.
Okay. I'll, I'll look into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. We have Public Works Director Matt Mansell here to present to council the Fleet Management Fund budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Mansell, your Public Works Director. Tonight we'll be covering our Fleet Management Fund and our planned vehicle purchase program for FY '26. Soon as I learn how to operate a computer. As you can see, just a quick overview of the Fleet Department. We conduct full life cycle operations within Fleet Management. So the staff maintains everything from the initial acquisition through the life cycle maintenance of those assets, all the way through disposition and auction process and reinvesting those funds in our replacement program. Our current fleet sits around 822 assets. That's comprised of over 50 manufacturers. And, you know, the current status is upwards of 60 million plus in a replacement value. Of course, that's not initial cost value. That's replacement of the existing fleet. The workload is quite substantial, as you can imagine. So we average about 2,500 annual work orders through that, that Fleet Maintenance Shop currently. And we're on track to exceed the 8,000 average parts issued through the Parts Department in Fleet Management.
Matt, do you know off the top of your head, how many assets you had last year and how many work orders you guys had last year?
So I know we were sub 800 just a little bit. And I would have to get you the exact number. I didn't bring that with you. I, I just used it an average for that slide. But I can get you those, from the time that we brought Faster onboard. That's when we have an accurate accounting of the exact work order count.
I don't need the exact number. It was more to highlight the fact that you guys are doing a bang up job over there, particularly when we look at the Fleet Management staying the same, staying flat. I highly doubt they're, they had free time on their hands when you were sub 800 assets. So I'm assuming you all, you and Roger, me, you guys have a well-oiled machine over there, no pun intended. But I want to thank you for that.
Well, I will have to say some thanks to council as well. One way that we're able to do that is by maintaining our, our fleet replacement process, keeping the fleet fresh as possible. Of course, we want to make sure we get as much life expectancy, expectancy as we can out of those investments. But by keeping that fleet newer, we're able to leverage the residual value. We're able to leverage the warranty operations as well and the support that that provides, take some, some of the manpower requirements off of our staff. But we really want to say thank you for supporting us in those endeavors. And again, I, I will take the praise for the staff. They, they do an excellent job.
Yeah, they do.
And, you know, I'll get into a little bit of that. If you look into our position summary here.
Hey, Matt, I want to pile on. I want the Vice Mayor's
Absolutely.
You do it all with, with how many bays right now? Four?
We, we have three bays on the, the light duty side, I guess.
Right.
Our heavy duty is basically outside.
Outdoors.
Yes, sir.
So, so the new maintenance facility, the MOC will provide us, what, 12 bays to, to better manage our fleet and, and supporting equipment. So really, truly amazing work.
Thank you, sir. So if you look at our Fleet Position Summary, again, this year, we're not asking for staff. Honestly, to Councilman Gambero's point, I don't know if I would have somewhere to put them if I were able to onboard them. But I did want to provide kind of symmetrics like I did with our other staff, right? So for fleet, we, we go to the Association for Government Fleets as kind of our professional organization and our standards. They say for county and city fleets with a diverse makeup such as ours, you're looking for a ratio of maintenance staff of about 55 to 60 assets per mechanic. So if you look at our Fleet Position Summary, eight of those personnel are mechanics. You could call it eight and a half because I can't keep my Um, you could call it eight and a half because I can't keep my fleet supervisor out of the shop. Um, but that brings us to a ratio of about 103 assets per mechanic. So if we were just to straight line apply, which I would never do, straight line apply that ratio, to get us right sided with the standard, we would need 14 mechanics, so, um, you know, that would bring our, our total staff, uh, I think to, quick math, right, 23? So, um, you know, we're definitely not looking to do that this year, but just something, you know, I'd like to put in the back of your minds, as we continue to grow a fleet and our, our fleet becomes more complex, um, you know, additional staff in the future is probably a reality on the trajectory, so. And looking into our Fleet Management budget, um, you know, we are looking at a reduction this year of 6.9%. Uh, a lot of that does have to do with the capital purchase programs and the fluctuations in those costs. Uh, we do see a decrease in our operational expenditures, and again, that, that goes to the point of maintaining a newer fleet and leveraging the warranties, uh, and then replacing them before they become problem children and, and end up staying within our, our shop too long, so. This also, if you look to the effectiveness on the organization, this means that those assets are in the hands of the operators every day, able to make sure that they can do the jobs in every department throughout the city, whether that's, you know, utility, stormwater, or public works, uh, our code enforcement officers, anybody that's using a city asset, we want to make sure that they have that asset at least a 90% uh, vehicle and commission ratio, and right now we're able to maintain that.
Sorry, I have a question, can you, um, on the interfund transfer, maybe I missed it, did you say what that was for?
The, the 3299?
No, the, for, for, for actual 2024 is 1.2, and then we've got adopted 490, 1.9 for 2025.
Those would be the revenues.
That is correct, so the internal, interfund transfers on the revenue side that you see are, uh, new equipment purchases from the department, so it's an expense to the departments as a revenue into the fleet fund. The internal allocations, it's your existing fleet replacement and maintenance.
Is there a reason why there are separate line item?
Uh, yes, so your, um, interfund transfers is the first time that the department is funding those. It is not on the replacement program, so it's accounted for as a addition to the department's budget.
Let me try. I'm gonna try to bail her out, because I know she's not feeling well. So if, if a department purchases a new vehicle, it's the first time that they've had it, say it's a new position that was funded, uh, and that came with a pickup truck for that, for that position, uh, that item would be a new expenditure. It comes out of that, that department's, uh, operating budget for that year. For replacement items, uh, we have a replacement, uh, allocation process, so, um, when that truck is accepted, we know that it has a seven to 10-year lifespan, and we basically put them on a payment plan, so they're saving every year into the fund, into the fleet replacement fund, so that when it ages out, there's money in the bank to buy the replacement. So it's an interfund transfer versus.
An allocation.
An allocation.
Okay, thank you.
And you will see, um, the adopted, uh, versus estimated capital outlays fluctuate a little bit uh, on this as well, and that's really because the past few years inventory challenges have been outrageous. Uh, and we've had to carry over, you know, two or three year purchases in some instances. So like FY23 purchase might have been approved by council, uh, it did not get, get delivered till FY25, then that money is transferred into the budget, and you see that on the, on the capital outlay.
Just to, just to recap, so the internal allocations are the, the fleet replacement?
Fleet replacement and fleet maintenance.
And then primarily the interfund transfers are the first time costs for a new asset?
That is correct.
And this provides you an overview of our, uh, vehicle purchase, uh, as planned for FY26. So again, you know, every asset has a life expectancy. Uh, we had 190 vehicles, uh, or assets this year that we inspected at, that had met or exceeded one of the milestones for what we consider the lifespan, so be that mileage or age. And that can fluctuate, you know, some mowers have a three-year programmed lifespan because they're running, you know, eight hours a day, six days a week this time of year, um, whereas White Fleet, you know, we target seven to 10 years or 100,000 miles as the trigger point for inspection. Now, those are not hard and fast, so like I said, this year we had 190, uh, assets that we looked at, and we're recommending 36 of those items for replacement. And not all of those are vehicles either, uh, if you look at the breakdown of the list, uh, some of those assets, like, uh, I know Fleet is replacing four of the mobile pillar lifts, those are considered assets just due to cost and complexity. Uh, so those are on this as well, so I think we actually have between equipment and vehicles, you know, that, that brings us to 32 assets that are physical vehicle type. And then some shop equipment on top of that. So if you break that down further, um, that's nine White Fleet items that are, that we're recommending replacement, that's regular pickup trucks and those types of items. And then we have 23 equipment items, that's everything from a, a mower to a vac truck and in between.
Golf cart.
Golf cart, uh, there are, I don't think there's any golf carts on this list, no. We do have a couple of, uh, gator carts, um, that are used for maintenance activities. And then in addition, there's four fire assets, two of those are what's called MERVs, they're, they're, you know, mobile, uh, emergency response vehicles. Two going out, one replacing it, and then, uh, we're replacing one engine and one tower uh, through the fire capital replacement program that we started this year, so.
Matt, as you, as you look at like the, the assets that you highlighted that, you know, you know, sell them, sell them at auction, uh, whatever the case may be, just, just before they're almost uneconomical to repair, right? Uh, when you have other revenues here, does that include any revenues that come in from, from auction?
Yes, those revenues go back into the fleet replacement fund, and then those are utilized in our replacement.
I, I just want to highlight that for our residents, I mean, I mean, some, these are still good work trucks that are out there, and then, and some of them are actually decent deals. They're, they're as is, you know, it's kind of buy at your own risk, but it's an opportunity. I know, I know Councilman, uh, Miller's always looking for a good auction vehicle, but, um, uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's an opportunity to bring, um, to bring in, um, or just to highlight that those revenues are coming back in to offset those costs.
Thank you, and while we're plugging it, we do have a Transit and, uh, I believe an F-250 on the auction site right now, if anybody's interested, open to the public.
Ever again.
Mr. Mayor?
Again, I definitely appreciate your support, but I'm here for any questions that you might have.
Any follow-up questions for Matt?
Thank you so much, Matt.
Thank you. Please, I make a motion to let her go home.
I hope, I hope you, I could tell in your voice that you had something.
Thank you for being here, I know you have one more slide here that we can all read just fine, but thank you so much, your dedication is very evident, and thank you to Carl and Matt as well.
And I apologize for having to leave midway.
Please.
And we will see you again on, uh, August 26th for your, um, final proposed budget, which will include all funds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, go home, get some rest.
Thank you.
Don't infect anyone.
I know, I'm not touching anything.
Mr. Mayor, uh, we still have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone have any public comment concerning the slide presentation we were just? Yes, Ms. Chantel.
All right, um, I heard a few times more projects than revenues to fund them, okay? And also, um, the impact fee, a lot about the impact fee, so help me understand, the impact fee is the impact on the growth of the city, and if that's the case, who funds that? Because I came to a few meetings, uh, months ago, and I heard the developers were supposed to pay, uh, an impact fee, so if they do, they do that in one time, but the impact stays forever. You know, when we have an increase of population, we have an increase of public, of, uh, public, uh, cars everywhere, and that stays there. So who pays for that? Is that the resident? Does it come from our taxes? Or, or what is it about? And will it be enough impact fee ever to absorb the future growth?
Thank you, ma'am. That's it, Ms. Chantel? That's it, okay, thank you. That's it, fine, thank you. No, no, you're fine. Yeah, impact fees, uh, we're trying to increase it as much as we can, Ms. Chantel, so they're not going to pay for everything. Impact fees do not pay for everything, and we have to absorb the growth. And I hope, most of it is paid for through Avalor, what you pay in for taxes. But it's not gonna, we're never gonna get to a point where impact fees pay for everything, and there's only certain projects it can pay for. It can't refit, refurbish, stuff like that, well, in some cases, but it, it can't cover everything. There's only a certain percentage of impact fees, you don't, you don't need to come back up.
But to answer your question, developers pay impact fees.
Yes. We can talk after if you like, Ms. Chantel. Go ahead, Peter.
Just for the record, the mayor's closed public comment and moved on to the next agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't think anyone else was here. We got a small crowd tonight, we're okay, we're family here. Yes, Mr. Russell?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry. So, good evening, Mayor and members of City Council, uh, we're here to present, uh, the Water Supply Facilities Work Plan. But on top of that, there is also, this is to be incorporated or amended as part of the comprehensive plan. When we were going through the comprehensive plan, uh, I believe we mentioned to council that this is something that will have to be tagged on after the adoption of the comprehensive plan. The timing just did not work out that we could finish the work that was necessary for the completion of this water supply plan to be incorporated at the time that we adopted, uh, the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. And so that's why we are here at this time, and, and just doesn't, uh, to remind you again that even when we adopted the Comprehensive Plan, we had certain policies that referred to the need to update that Comprehensive Plan, uh, once we completed this, uh, this analysis. And so, uh, of course, I'll let, uh, my colleagues introduce themselves.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Peter Russell, Utility, uh, Deputy Director, I also have Garen Hopkins here.
Yeah, good evening.
Environmental Coordinator. So, um, again, um, thank you for the opportunity for us to present this final Water Supply Facilities Work Plan for the city of Palm Coast. This is a required part of our long-term planning, uh, and it ensures that we meet the water needs for our grown community. This work plan helps us align our land use decisions with the availability of water and ensures compliance with our state planning requirements, it also integrates our planning efforts with the regional water supply plan.
And in addition to that, what Pete just said, um, this plan also addresses that we provide a projection the city needs for at least a 10-year period, which we actually go above and beyond that. Um, it identifies and prioritizes both alternative and traditional water supply facilities and sources of the water to re, uh, required to meet the future demands. Um, it identifies conservation and reuse measures needed to project future demands, and it also allows development of our capital projects required to meet the projected demands for a five-year period, also known as our five-year capital improvement plans.
The Water Supply Facilities Work Plan covers the full utility service area, not just the city limits, and looks ahead 20 years to ensure that we have adequate supply and infrastructure in place. Using.
May I stop you, sorry, can you go back to the last slide for me? Thank you, so on the bottom there you said supports annexation and development areas. Did you all anticipate a certain amount of annexation in doing this analysis?
Yes, we did, yes, we looked, we looked at, um, the, uh, potential annexation and ones that already have been done in the past years and incorporated those numbers into our plan.
Do you know offhand by chance how much you, you, you analyzed as a part of anticipated annexation?
Uh, probably in the next couple of slides, uh, I have a number that might reflect that annexation.
Okay.
So using the, our population data and development projections, we estimate future water demand and ensure we'll have the capacity to meet it. This includes all user types. This effort ties to identifying and incorporating alternate water supply projects identified in the plan, including any conservation and reuse programs. Our most recent data shows that our daily average flows are currently trending below our original projections. This is a positive indicator, uh, suggesting that we are operating with more available capacity than anticipated now. Lower than expected flow rates place us in a better position to manage our system, reduce operational strain, and maintain compliance with regulatory requirements. It also gives us added flexibility as we plan for long-term, uh, infrastructure and treatment needs. The number that I'd like to show you is the 2025, uh, population estimates. Outside, outside, uh, is 7,211, and again, that's, that's a projection. And that's the number that we came with, came up with, that serves the areas like on the beachside, marine land, Flagler County, Beverly Beach, as well as any future annexation, uh, that we think we might experience. That's the number that we, uh, came up with.
I just wanted to jump in, and so regardless of whether it's annexation or not, we still have a requirement to provide water, right, as the primary utility?
Uh, pretty much, that's, uh, that's a good point, yes, yes.
Even if they're not annexed in, you know, we're still supplying that water?
Yeah, yep.
And we're getting more revenue out of it?
Typically, uh, when you, uh, become a utility that serves a population of over 100,000, the, um, regulatory agencies kind of expect you to take on that leadership, if you will, and just help, um, other service areas that really don't have any treatment or any, any kind of mains or any infrastructure, uh, for water, so that's one of the things that, um, I'll point out. And of course, we're well over that now.
So, so I, I just, and thank you for pointing that out, um, Councilman Miller, because some of these numbers just aren't reconciling for me. I mean, even in the city of Palm Coast, right now, we're at 110,000. So I understand that there was some point in time when this data was put together, but we're talking about amending the comp plan based on data, and it seems we're already starting a few thousand residents behind. And then when I think about the total here, so you've got within the city, outside the city, and then total of 114,000. Obviously, that doesn't include the entire population for the county, right? Because we know.
That's correct, yes, yes.
Do we know about how many in the county this does not include?
Vice Mayor, let me try to help and clarify some of these numbers. The, the population you're seeing, it, it, we might be at 110, but it was based, this is based on a projection that was in 20, early 2024, so it certainly didn't take into account the growth that might have been seen, seen in 2024. And Bieber's going to release, uh, any day now, any, probably any second now, um, the projection for what would be the April 1, 2025, population for Palm Coast. It, it could be at this, or it could be higher, again, these are projections. I want to clarify that the outside projections given here are the outside populations that are outside, outside of the city limits, but are served by our utility system. When we say that we took into account annexation and, uh, it, it's encompassed that what we used is what Bieber gave us. is what Bieber gave us as population projections. They gave us the pie for the entire county. Out of that county pie, the city took in, based on historic, our historic share of what the population growth has been. That's what we use for the population estimates. So it didn't necessarily take into account that we might add additional land, but it took into account that based from, from the state's projections, you have this pie. And you, Palm Coast, with, with our planning analysis, would take what we, what we believe has been our historic share of that pie, and we take that as the population projection. So it, it could be that because those areas that are, that are scheduled, that are unincorporated. And so their share, yes, is in, with Flagler County right now. But when, if they are annexed into the city, then they certainly become the city, part of the city's population. And so these, these, you know, Bieber provides population updates every year or two, probably more every two years. And this study will be updated every five years. And once we've, if we get to the point that we have annexed large tracts of land, and depending on when they're ready for vertical in population, then we can certainly adjust the population. But right now, this does sort of take in, does take into account that eventually the share of, of, of the Flagler County pies, population growth, more might come into the city.
Okay, I, I only ask because, you know, we're in the process of increasing our cup. So making sure that we've got the most accurate data as we move forward with that obviously is crucial. So just want to make sure that that's the most accurate data we have, and that's the information we're giving in order to take those next steps.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. We have the, these use the latest population projections from, from Bieber.
Okay, thank you.
So to that point, just some quick Googling. 2020, Bieber, I believe, estimated somewhere 70,000 plus residents for Palm Coast. The census came in at 89,000. So there's a possibility that the Bieber estimates are not capturing the actual growth. I mean, obviously, it's just an estimate because nobody's counting people. But just want to make sure, I don't know if there's a way to build in, you know, potential for overestimating so that we're prepared. I don't know what that looks like.
It's a little nerve-wracking because I feel like we're in this position, we're essentially asking for more water because we've piled on more people. So it's just a concern that we're, we're maybe, I mean, we are taking steps, obviously, to fix the problem, but are we doing enough?
In terms of population projection, I, I believe we're giving you the, the most reasonable.
Okay.
You know, we certainly can't take into account policies or things that might happen that are outside of the control of what the, the state has told us. This is going to be your population growth. Take your piece of it and use that for planning purposes. And that's how we use that in the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, I, I understand that that's the standard, right? That's the data that you're, that you have to use to work with. I just want to make sure that we're prepared.
And, and we are, since we do update this, and, and that's part of, and I'm now getting into, I'm stepping, I'm going to step on the utility deputy director's foot at this point, and saying that when we, when they do apply for a cup, they have to update the projections and, and the demands from that population. So it's not done in absent of, this is not static. I think the region, the water management district recognizes that. Population projections, they're accurate the, the next minute after you make them.
Thank you.
So in addition to what we just talked about, I'd like to point out the finished water being 10.89. Our actually, our actual average flow rate from January 1 to yesterday was 9.6. So again, we were kind of under a little bit. So that's, it's a little bit of a margin of safety there that will help us out. But we are in the midst of going for a cup allocation increase. We're just working with our hydrogeologist, finishing up on some of the modeling. We, we made a little change to the modeling a while back where we're adding some additional capacity, some wells that we know that we have, and we're kind of working through that process now. That's why it was a little bit delayed. Okay, so just the alternate water supply information, some ongoing stuff, the use of the drinking water byproduct from plant three, for water treatment plant two and water plant three, the drinking water bypass from plant three, and it's blended with water plant number one's raw water at a certain blended ratio. And this is considered an alternate water supply. And this particular project was done back in April of 2011. Since then, we've actually captured 2.6 billion gallons of water that otherwise would have been just discharged into an open water canal. Same thing with plant two. It's recovered through lime softening, followed by microfiltration. That's a high-level treatment system. And since March of 2015, we've saved 1.9 billion gallons. So those two added together, 2.4 billion gallons of water that otherwise would have been just wasted. And not only wasted, we would have had to pay for the affluent disposal and all the tests associated with that disposal program, which would be quite a bit of money that we saved. I just wanted to point that out. So the district really enjoys listening to us when we talk about this project because it was a project that we came up with, for plant three anyways. Plant two was an EPA requirement that we ran into with our discharge. Both projects eliminate the wasteful discharge of the drinking water bypass, two surface waters, and recover up to about 1.9 million gallons per day. We're currently within our permit limits, but as demand grows, and we just talked about a little bit, we'll, we'll need to evaluate additional capacity or optimize existing systems through upgrades and conservation. The plan identifies infrastructure needs to maintain service reliability, such as plant upgrades, transmission improvements and storage. These are all included in our CIP, as well as well field that Carl talked about earlier, the brackish water development, all that exploration, and new CSA wells that he also mentioned that will be supplying water to plant one in the very near future. Conservation remains a key tool in stretching our supply. Continued public education and use of reclaimed water will reduce demand on our portable system. This includes the indirect portable reuse, which, when no one is there yet, and the aquifer storage and recovery projects.
Pete, if I may, what's our current total cup for drinking water?
I'm sorry, Councilman Miller, I missed that.
The total cup, the, the total limit of water that we can draw?
Oh, I'm sorry. The total limit is for the superficial aquifer, which that feeds plant one and plant two, is 6.9 million gallons per day. The fluoridine is 4.12. And the brackish water, which we haven't started using yet, is 4.5 million gallons per day.
So currently, with our current systems, we can draw 11.82? Was that, was my math good on that?
Our current system, could you repeat that again, Councilman Miller?
11.82.
Right now, we can actually...
That's excluding the brackish, since we don't, we're not actually pulling any brackish?
Correct. Yes, you're right, yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Regional collaboration ensures we're all working towards sustainable water management. We participate in coordination meetings and share data with surrounding jurisdictions. This work plan is adopted as a comprehensive plan amendment to ensure it has legal standing and is incorporated into our long-range planning network.
I had another question, I'm sorry. We don't have to go back to the slide, but I see our water supply numbers diminishing over time from traditional and increasing from alternative. I assume that's bringing online the brackish and then drawing from the aquifers less the, the superficial and the fluoridine? Is that the reason why that's decreasing over time?
The traditional is the, like you said, the superficial and the fluoridine. And I misunderstood your question.
I was just wondering why that's decreasing? Is that because we're bringing on the anticipation of brackish?
Yes, we're sort of balancing out the production from each aquifer supply.
Okay, thank you.
And again, it's a projection. Okay, so we've included implementation guidance and some building tracking, tracking. The plan will be updated as conditions change or new regulatory guidance is issued. We did conduct an aquifer performance test of brackish upper fluoridine aquifer that was done quite a few years ago. The data acquired from these tests have been modeled to determine the feasibility of receiving an allocation of brackish water in the cup. And like I said, that's already been accomplished. The St. John's River Water Management District reviewed the model and determined an acceptable allocation, that's the 4.5 that I was talking about earlier. And we are now in another sampling and analysis phase once the monitored wells that you just approved recently are completed.
And again, the purpose of completing this study is to be incorporated into the comprehensive plan as required by state statutes. With the comprehensive plan amendments here, these amendments were developed in coordination with the St. John's River Water Management District. And basically through our conversation, we've basically have, feel comfortable, and they feel comfortable that these will meet their requirements. In addition to that, some of the objectives that we had in coordinating that language, maybe not holistic is the, the right word, but to be more, to simplify the amendment of, the amending of the comprehensive plan to incorporate this. And the final of this is that, again, this amendment will amend just the infrastructure and the capital improvements element based on the adopted CIE that goes with this water supply plan. So these are just examples. I'm not going to go through all of them, but again, just to show that the language changes such that it, it makes it known that by reference, that this water supply facilities work plan is a part of the comprehensive plan. Same here. And again, this does include that language that we said that we will, we will be adopting this as part of the comprehensive plan. And again, this is just a clarification. And finally, yes, and... Okay. I'm sorry, seems to be skipping. Oh, here it is. And again, just to summarize, these amendments are here to really coordinate growth projections and environmental sustainability. Again, it's statutorily required. It's been coordinated not just with the, with, with the water management district, that is both the study and the amendments. And again, maybe for our utility folks to help secure future water supply funding. And, and so at, anyway, so just to wrap it up with the, the next steps, we, we will come back to you at a business meeting to have a public hearing on, on the proposed amendments, and that's scheduled for next Tuesday. We will then go to the, the following night to the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board for, for their review and response. We'll, we'll need to transmit this amendment to the state agency for 30-day reviews. But as I mentioned, we've coordinated through the process of the developing the water supply plan and the amendments. We've coordinated with the St. John's River Water Management District. And finally, after that 30-day review, will probably be sometime around October that we will bring this back for adoption.
Mr. Popple, let me ask you this. It's going back to Ms. Chantel's question. And I kind of thought I made a mistake. Impact fees don't pay for it, right?
Impact fees pay for the impact of new growth. Yes, sir. Impact fees cannot be used for maintenance.
That's what I'm saying, for all these refit and all this stuff, we get, we get these bonds, that's why our rates are going up significantly in the next three years, right?
Impact fees have a limited use, mayor, yes.
Exactly. But our, why, we've already submitted and approved our comprehensive plan. Why are we amending it for this specifically? Dumb it down for me. Specifically, why are we amending our comprehensive plan?
Sure. Because this has information that was not included as part of that transmission. Although I will admit that the population projections that are part of this plan was incorporated in that comprehensive plan. We, this, if I was to dumb it down for you, this is a formality that we need to do to incorporate the water supply facilities work plan. The, the data that we have in this plan is consistent in what's already been adopted into the comprehensive plan in terms of population projections and the usage.
Okay, so we're way back in the day, and we have this whole go around. We got 19,000 houses in the queue, right?
Mayor, mayor, I know that the people online want to hear you. Can you turn your mic on?
Sorry, I didn't have my mic. I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry, I turned it off so I'm not bumping the mic and stuff. So we've already, we went back round and around about this, about we have 19,000 houses in the queue. And all these improvements that we are paying for with our rate increase in the next three years, and these bonds that we're going to be paying on for 30 years are only for the existing residents of the city. We narrowed that down. You guys scoped that down for us. It's not about the growth, it's about existing residents. So is this solely to increase our cup to say, hey, we can just keep building? Because that's not the case. Because we don't have enough water now, and we have 19,000 houses in the queue. So explain that to the residents of Palm Coast.
I'm not quite sure how the, what's the question there, mayor? Help me.
Well, we are amending, we are amending the comprehensive plan again. We, we just finished it. We changed a few things. We submitted it, we transmitted it. And we just went through the rate increase. We're going to increase the rates on the residents up to 2029, and then we're going to go with the CPI on it. So what, what specifically does this do for our city? This amendment, or is it all about increasing the cup?
This is, this amendment is to, it's, in, in some ways, it's informative for the city, right? If we were to anticipate a growth that takes us to about 156,000 with the service area of our utilities covering another 9,000, the analysis needs to be made as to what does a population of 165,000 people mean in its demand for, for water supply? And I believe that that's what this study is for. Does that mean having to amend and ask for more water? If you follow the population projections and based on the usage per capita, and if we were to continue on that growth, then the answer would be yes.
But how are we going to get there? How are we going to, if we, if right now, we're at a population of 110,000 people, and we, we are taking out these bonds by October, we're taking out those bonds just to support the existing residents, not the 19,000 houses in the queue? How are we supposed to get there to sustain 150,000 residents? How are we supposed to get there? How are we going to pay for that?
So in our, in our rate study with the bonds, there's also a projection of impact fees that I think was, if I recall right, between 170 and 200 million in impact fees collected based on current, the same type of growth rates that are used for Bieber. So... So some of that, you know, bringing on new treatment plants and things like that would have to be paid for by those impact fees.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just my understanding of what staff is asking of us. So we, we did pass a comprehensive plan on, on, on this topic in generality. But if you, you know, if you go through this, this proposed ordinance, it's pretty specific. So I think what they're doing is they're necking it down into, into really more specific requirements as we, as a support and documentation to what we are already approved. Now, not to answer your question on
I can understand them on the statutory requirements of the state. But to, to increase the cup, when we're, we're paying out the wazoo now, we're going to be paying more and more and more. It's what, when we go back to the day when I said in 10 years, you could be paying $500 a month for your city utilities. There's no doubt in my mind that that's going to happen. So I just, I just want people to know that this is costly. It's costly. We're, we're, we're never, we're always going to be playing catch-up. And it's always going to fall on us, the residents. I just, I just, I just don't see us increasing our cup beyond that 19,000 houses that we already have in the queue.
If I may, Mayor, I don't, staff isn't asking to do anything more than what's already been projected. So what they're, what I gather they're asking is, right now, they have proposed or they have created their water supply facilities work plan. And per statute, that work plan now has to be incorporated into the comp plan. So it's not as if they came before us previously for the rate study and said, hey, we need money for XYZ improvements to accommodate such and such growth. We're dealing with the same pot of numbers and growth. It's just now it's in a specific plan as required by statute, and that has to be incorporated into our comp plan.
Well, I can understand that, but what, the whole point is, where are we going to get those monies to get up to that level? That's the things we have to think about is how are we going to get to, because we already know the impact fees don't pay for it all.
Right.
You're not going to take the impact fees and build a whole new water treatment facility. It's not going to happen. So it's going to be through rates or abhorrent tax. It's not going to be completely all, impact fees aren't going to cover it. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that we are in a situation here. I keep saying it. And it's, you know, that's my issue. I'm sure we have to meet statutory requirement. I have no doubt about that. But to keep going back to the well, literally, when, when we have the situation we have with 19,000 houses in the queue.
And Mayor, in the next agenda item, we're going to cover that 19,000 and the capacity because the wastewater has been particularly of interest. But if you recall, your comprehensive plan is your long-range planning document, you know, and often, you know, the city is ridiculed by not planning ahead. And this is the city planning ahead with the water supply facilities work plan.
And Mr. Mayor, I would say we, we get a vote along the way, right? Because we, we approve the capital improvement plan to, to adjust for, you know, growth that may come in. And to Councilman Miller's and the Vice Mayor's concerns, you know, do we have enough water to cover down on our residents, right? And so we, we still have a bite at that apple as we, as we continue to go down the road. So to answer your question, you know, how are we going to pay for it? We'll, we'll have to take a look at it as we move forward. Your projections on, on utility rates, you know, we'll see that if that bears true. But you know, I think we, this is, it's a specific work plan, as the Vice Mayor said. And I think, I think it's something that we're all going to have to wrestle with going forward.
I know they have to do it for statutory requirements and to be in line. We need proper planning to get where we need to be to sustain 150 or whatever that number was upwards of 160,000 people. And right now, we, we're not there. We're not, it's going to be hard to catch up.
Mr. Mayor, I did have a quick question.
Let's go right ahead.
Thank you. So gentlemen, you know, thanks for your work and your analysis on this topic. It's, it's not easy work and you know, you've really got to, you've got to, you've got to bring in your, your, your planning skills and with your, with your operating skills on, on, you know, how things change and whether it's a brackish well versus a deep well into the aquifer, things of that nature. In your analysis, as we look out and really kind of to some of the mayor's concerns, where are we going to get some of this water also to cover down? You have shown us previously in a map, you know, this is where we're exploring, you know, potential future wells and things of that nature. A lot of it's west, right? Kind of in Palm Coast 2.0 land, is it not?
Yes, excuse me, yes, it is. We have about 8,800 acres that we're exploring right now. And we're, we've already plotted about 15 wells, actually a little bit more, but we paid for 15 and we'll end up with maybe a few more. And we're in a, we're in a phase of doing some test florings. And they're out there right now performing those activities. It's part of the process. It's a step-by-step process. And we've got, we have to know what kind of materials, you know, if they, if it's clay or sand or, you know, coconut, that kind of a thing. So that's happening as we speak right now. The next phase, when that's accomplished, will be to do a feasibility test well. And that's a small four-inch well. And we look at low rates. We look at a different aspects of how well that the aquifer will perform. And then after that, if all of that works out okay, we'll, we'll put in a CSA well. And then we have plans later on for the brackish to potentially, and we're talking about this now, it's not cobblestone, but potentially put in a, right on, co-locate on the same site, a brackish well. So we'll have two wells on the same site. And we've already planned this out for plant three in the phase two wells that are already, we're already using for the CSA wells. They'll be co-located. They'll have a brackish well right there on, on site. So that'll help with constructive, construction costs, infrastructure costs, because you'll be able to be, well, you'll have the pipeline. You'll be able to share a pipeline with the different wells. It will be in close proximity of the plant for those wells that are already online.
Okay, well, thank you. I just, I just wanted to highlight for the residents, you know, kind of in military terms, future ops, you guys are looking at, at potential sources. You're looking at where that's going to be. You have specific locations and you're going through the process to do the analysis to make sure that as, whether it's the Bieber census or whatever, whatever term of reference we use, we have, we're, we're actively pursuing other sources to ensure that our community is covered.
Absolutely, yes, we are.
Thank you.
I would like to hear from Carl because it looks like he has probably an important sheet of paper in his hand with some information for us. But I went back to the other presentation and between now and 2030, it looks like the projections for impact fee collection between water and wastewater, Mayor, is about $100 million. Rough math, but that looks to be what the revenues are projecting.
Yeah, I was just going to speak to some of the water capacity projects. As part of the impact fee study and or the rate study that was completed, the gap study, we did have water capacity projects. There are some that are funded with the bond, but we have quite a few wells and other capacity enhancements that are funded with those impact fee rates. So you know, that, that is, the intent is that those capacity fees are going to plan for that future, you know, capacity needs in water. We did have that plan laid out for 10 years and identified that the brackish expansion, those brackish wells and additional source water for the, the capacity needs.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Continue on to the next presentation there. Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment concerning this comprehensive plan amendment.
Thank you, Peter. I appreciate it.
Don't go anywhere. You might have questions.
Jeannie Duarte. Water Treatment Plant One has plenty of capacity that is not being utilized. Legal standing, the brackish, what's the definition of brackish? As far as I'm aware, it's shower water, toilet water, dishwashing water, et cetera. I do have a concern about wastewater treatment plant two sitting right next to water treatment plant three. So close that their backup generators are housed side by side in the same building. It's my understanding that the reclaimed wastewater and solids are used for irrigation and fertilizer. When I worked at an alfalfa field out in California that used reclaimed water, the alfalfa was only allowed to be fed to horses, not for livestock or crops meant for human consumption. It is also my understanding that the future vision for these wastewater treatment plants are to reuse the reclaimed water by recycling it back into potable water or cup, however you want to put that, that goes into our homes. For those of us with religious and spiritual concerns, the thought of consuming reclaimed water from human waste containing human DNA and who knows what is strictly forbidden and runs along the lines of cannibalism. A symptom of cannibalism is madness. I don't know about the rest of you, but this feels and seems unethical and very evil.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Chantel.
All right. We, we can't talk about growth if we don't define it. To estimate growth should not be that complicated. You know how many developments you authorize. You know how many houses are being built? That gives a number. And each house might have an average of four people, two cars. That might be a good place to start. Now, I heard about the millions of gallons of water per day that would go through that facility. And is it during regular time or would that be during hurricane time? And also, Mayor, you just say that we don't have enough water now. Okay, so I'm bringing again the Google Data Center. Even if all the water that is recycled goes to the data center, it still has to get out of there. Where does it go? And would it even be enough if we don't have enough water for us? Let's see, I think that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for public comment? Bring it back to that. Any follow-ups?
I have one question since, because a lot of this has happened before I got here. Just a simple question. Do we have enough potable water to fulfill the requirements of our citizens today?
Yes, we do. Yes.
I, I know, but today we have enough.
Yes. There's no question about it.
Yeah. I understand the point.
Okay, Peter, Mr. Poppy.
Oh, sure. The, the brackish water question, of course, they're all good questions. But to define brackish water, it's, I believe, I haven't thought about this in a long time, but a brackish water means that it's a little bit saltier and it has a total dissolved concentration of, I believe, don't quote me on this, 10,000 milligrams per liter to 50,000, I think. Okay, as opposed to a freshwater supply that has less than the 10,000 milligram per liter threshold of total dissolved solids, which consists of calcium sulfate, calcium bicarbonate, just chlorides, just the normal cations and ions that you would, you would have in a, maybe a little, like in seawater, basically, but less. Seawater has, again, don't quote me, 70,000 milligrams per liter of TDS total, total dissolved solids. So that's kind of the definition between the two. It differentiates between freshwater that we use, that terminology, freshwater, brackish and seawater.
Yes, sir. So we're moving on to E3 about subdivision capacity and development.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, as staff is getting ready for the presentation, just wanted to remind you, we discussed this presentation to be informative for you on understanding kind of what's changing in legislation. Unfortunately, our lobbyist Laura Bomer couldn't be here today, and so we moved that item to your agenda next week. But staff has a presentation to help understand the development approvals, the subdivision master plan and all the associated requirements in your land development code, as well as talk through some of the capacity challenges and looking ahead at planning for our infrastructure for wastewater capacity at the end of the presentation. Because we want to focus not only on residential, but also on those commercial and industrial projects that we have in the pipeline. So Ray, you're going to get us started?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Johnson, for that great introduction. Good evening, everybody. Ray Teiner, Deputy Director of Community Development. Yeah, this is hopefully, I'm very pleased that we're being able to present this presentation to you and hopefully it's really informative to our citizens. It's really, we really want this geared towards our citizens. The presentation, as Ms. Johnson had indicated, it's kind of set in three different parts. The first discussion will be done by Marcus Duffy, the legal framework for land use and development approvals. And then I'll take the subdivision plating process itself. And then Pete and Carl with support, we had some of that discussion already on the wastewater capacity and development activity. So Marcus, if you want to go ahead and start, we'll
Perfect. Well, good evening, Council. This is just a little refresher on legislative versus quasi judicial. As you're aware, as you are the legislative body here for the city of Palm Coast, and when you're talking about legislative issues, that's where you have broad discretion. That's your policymaking, where you are passing land development codes, future land amendments, stuff of that nature. Quasi judicial is where you guys are sitting as the fact finders, the judges, and you are adopting rules to our land development code. So just a couple of things I wanted to go over and talk about quasi judicial. Next slide. All right. So for quasi judicial, I believe you guys have heard me talk about this before, but so the main thing is that when an applicant comes and is getting approval, it is the burden on them. They have to prove that they meet all the factors. They have to prove that they are meeting the land development code, all the factors that staff present to you. Once they meet that burden, then it's on the city council to, if they do not agree, they have to move that burden that they have not met all the factors. And the main thing that when judges look at these things, when towns get overturned for making quasi judicial decisions, it is the competent substantial evidence. I know you've heard me say this a thousand times. I'm just going to try to refresh it for you tonight. But the main thing that you need to know is competent substantial evidence is not based on an opinion. It is based on facts, facts alone. Facts can be relayed from experts. It can be relayed on factual public comments. It can be relayed on staff reports, but it cannot be relied on legal arguments by attorney. It cannot be relied on by lay opinions from public comment. So next slide, please. So I went back and looked at some case law. These next two slides that I'm going to show you, these are still good case law that we rely on in the legal practice. But this first case is where there was an application for a special exception for the construction of an airport. The application was denied and it was denied based on testimony from neighbors who felt that the airport would damage surrounding areas. There was 200 people that came forward, signed a petition against it. But the judge said that the evidence was decided in this case was basically on layman's opinions. And then when they say layman's opinions is that there was no expert opinions relied on this. There was no actual facts that were relied. A lot of things that get towns into trouble is when commissions will rely on, oh, I read this online, that this substance come in that could give the, that could poison our water supply, that could give us cancer. They can't rely on those opinions. They have to rely on the facts that are, are before them. So the other, what I call is kind of like the money line from the judge in this case is that that second to last sentence there, he says, "It is not the function of the board to hold an election on the application." And what that means is that it is not the function of this board to go by public opinion, not to say, "Do the public want this or not?" It is the function of the board to apply the land development code or the law and make the decision based on the facts that are presented before them. Next slide. So then here's another one.
Marcus, I had a question about this. So this was specifically a special exception. Okay, so there's certain criteria that a special exception can be made, correct? So in that case, if they met the requirements of that special exception, you're saying that they can't deny it?
They can't, yes. If they meet the requirements, then...
And there's no factual evidence that says otherwise?
Yeah. Then it would be on the board to say, hey, you would need to have some type of facts to say why you should not meet that. Then you are on the burden to prove, like the judge would be like, all right, they have met all the rules, they meet your land development code, they meet the special exception requirements, so please explain to me, based on facts, why they do not meet that special exception. And if you just go based off an opinion, you have no facts to support yourself, then you're most likely going to lose that case. Any questions on that before I move to the next case? So this is another case out of the fourth DCA. Again, asked for another special exception. It was an assisted care living facility, and it was denied because various neighbors testified that the proposed use would cause traffic problems, light and noise pollution, and it have unfavorable impact on the area. I highlight that because a lot of things that are told before these hearings saying, "It's going to affect my property value. It's going to mess up the traffic, and I won't be able to sleep at night." Those are things, are opinions, that are being brought toward those boards. When the case law that I found, unless they actually have facts to support that, you can't rely on that. That's just an opinion. Now, I did give you an example about, in the case law, it said, you know, factual public comment, where there's actual public comment that comes forward that gives you facts, firsthand knowledge that they can show you, that that's reasonable for this council to rely on. But if it's not a fact, then if it's just opinion, you cannot rely on it, unfortunately. Next slide, please.
I have a question about this as well.
Yes.
So for instance, right, we know that development increases trips. We know that it uses resources. We know that it sometimes create noise or light or things like that that we're talking about here. How do we capture that? And I guess my question is, is that, for instance, if the previous example had a factual basis to say it will create a burden upon a resident with light or whatever, then we could deny for those reasons, as long as it's factual?
As long as it's like, you know, in your specific inquiry, as long as it is, you know, when you're doing a special exception, you have to usually meet the factors, all right? And so usually, is it against public policy? Is it going to be affect the local community?
So if light specifically isn't a listed factor, then we couldn't use that as factual evidence if there was factual evidence, or?
It would be, I think you're getting, I appreciate you're getting into the weeds, but in your example, say, say in your fact specific question, that light was an issue and light affected, it was going to blind traffic. So for some reason, by building that structure, it was going to blind traffic. That is something that, as long as there was factual evidence to support that, you guys could consider it.
And so in terms of things like that, I mean, does that mean that we have to fund a study to provide factual information?
No. Like, I mean, a lot of these times when these come...
Where do the facts come from, is what I'm saying.
So the facts come, so it's like I talked about, you can rely on expert opinion. So expert opinion, staff. Staff is, there's case law out there that when staff presents the recommendation, that is considered expert opinion, and you can rely on staff's analysis. A lot of these times when these things come before you, there are other experts that the applicant will hire to do in these analysis and work with staff. Traffic studies are done. So the traffic study is done in the report, that's an expert opinion you can rely on, saying the traffic is good, the traffic is bad, those are things you can rely on. Is that helping your question?
Yeah, I guess the question is, where does that fact come? When traffic is impacting residents?
Sorry, so that I'm on the record here. When traffic, for instance, right, is impacting residents, say we know that there's going to be an impact, right? What threshold would then be considered a reasonable thing to deny based on increased traffic or whatever the case may be?
Well, then that's where I think most of our land development code has those factors. It says how it does, I don't have it in front of me, but how it would affect the community.
So based on service level, if it's tripping a certain...
That's right.
...level of service?
Yes. Yeah. And that's also your, I'll use a word that we like to use, is totality of circumstances. So you're taking everything into, it's kind of like a kitchen sink. They prevent, they're giving you everything, you have to review everything, the totality of circumstances, and decide, all right, based on the evidence that I've seen, the facts that I have been given to me, do they meet the burden? And if they meet the burden, then you have to have a factual response of why they don't, why you think they're not meeting the need.
Got you. I'm just trying to, and sorry for all the questions, but, you know, just trying to make sure I understand the tools that we have to use, you know, properly, so that, you know, if there's something like that, what do we need in order to deny?
Great question. I appreciate the discussion.
Do you mind if I step in for just a second? So it's important, in my mind, to look at two things as well. The fact that the list of items that we have to consider are factors, and it's always a weighing game, right? So you're weighing all of the factors. But also, there's case law out there that says, there's nothing that says that we, as council people, have to take off our common sense hat or our own basic knowledge hat and set all of that aside. So in other words, if, you know, we have a certain knowledge base or a certain common sense or a certain observation base that we make, we can rely on that, too. We're not forced to completely set that aside and say, I have to put my general knowledge base aside and only consider what's in front of me. There's a lot of case law that uses phrases like, you're not forced to set aside this hat and only look at what's in front of you. So I just want to...
Same as judges, that they can rely on their own personal knowledge.
Correct, yes. Well said. So just to go back over about what I previously just talked about, so like, when it comes to setting policy, your legislative needs, you have broad discretion. And, you know, it's kind of what Vice Mayor Pontieri and Councilman Miller talked about is, there is a legal standard when you're looking at this stuff. It's called a fairly debatable standard. And that is, is that you are having discussions about this, and at the end of the day, what you're doing when you're making this policy, is it reasonable? Is it a reasonable person's mind? Are you making this decision as reasonable? Usually, the courts upheld it as long as you are making a reasonable step. Next slide. And so that's the, what I discussed about, the fairly debatable, it's as long as you're making a reasonable decision when it comes to this policy. But then also, you want to make sure you're not getting overturned by that last line is, they'll reverse decisions that are, if you're just arbitrary, capricious, or illegal. And what I'm talking about illegal is when you're not following your charter, you're not following your land development code or Florida statute, certainly those things.
So jumping in on this legislative portion, how much is the new state law that, I believe is part of 180, that says that we cannot make any changes to land code? That is considered, I believe, more onerous than state code?
More intrusive.
More intrusive.
Yeah, that's the money line. So, yeah, you know, myself and Mr. Tyner and Ms. Chantel, we've looked at it. Right now, I don't see any issues with what has passed or anything that we've passed in the recent that would make it more intrusive. We're still going through to make sure that if there is something that's coming down the line, if it's, or see that it could be subject to challenge.
Yeah, I think the thing that I'm kind of going down is, the road that I'm going down is that if, you know, one state statute says that we can't make, say, final plating, right, is administrative, right? And so now, council basically doesn't review anything in final plating. So maybe the natural response from a council, not necessarily ours, but other cities as well, is to go back and make their land use code more strict, but then another law says you can't do that either. So just kind of, essentially, we've kind of been handcuffed here.
In particular, that one, yes. They changed that one where it becomes to a land administrative, that makes that...
Is that 784?
Yeah.
Yeah, so 784 says that we don't review the final plattings, and then 180 says that we can't make our land use code more...
Trusive to the landowner. So it's focused on the landowner right now, yes. And that's only for, I believe that law only stays in effect for the next three years, and then it'll be readdressed.
Which one, 180?
180, yes.
Yeah, I'd be surprised if it makes it through the year, honestly.
Yeah, I would agree. All right, next slide, Ms. Chantel. All right, so these are just some, you know, a reattack of what I've gone over. At the end of the day, it's, as long as you can show support of why you made the decision, then I don't think we're ever going to be subject to challenge. If you're listening to the evidence, as Ms. Pontieri said, you're using that common sense, you're using the reasonable standard, and you're using the facts in front of you, then I don't see there ever be an issue. Standing by for any questions.
So if you're using your common sense and personal knowledge to draw conclusions that could be seen as opinion, then you can't use those?
As long as you have a fact to support it, that's competent substantial. So, I mean, if you have an experience that you can show, it's like, no, that's obviously not true. No, I'm trying to say as general perspective. But as long as you have facts, at the end of the day, when, you know, because I would be the one that would defend the city, if I'm drafting this brief to try to argue that, no, we did not violate anything, there was competent substantial evidence, as long as you can just give my office facts that you relied on, and it's not public opinion, it's not some random thing out there that does not make sense, if you could show it as a fact that why you said it did not meet those factors, it did not meet the land development code, we will be fine.
I had just one. Just in a lot of legal cases, precedent is the key. In other words, so that could also be a factor here, that similar case, like you already pointed out, similar cases could have a major impact on these kind of, when there's a difference of opinion. If there's no difference of opinion and you're meeting all the requirements, it should be fairly straightforward. But I would think when it gets down to one that's going to be difficult, where it's a 50-50 and that kind of thing, I would think that precedent would maybe the key factor, and that's when you get in front of a judge, that would be a key factor, even though we were being reasonable.
I think, too, well, I know, our boards like ours are given deference. So judges respect that separation of powers, and we are given deference as the fact finders and as the policymakers, too. So we do also have to keep that portion in mind, because that's a really important part of a judicial analysis as well.
Yeah, that, Ms. Pontieri is correct. So generally, courts want to give boards big discretion, and they only want to step in when it is an egregious act. That is, to my interpretation, so obvious that should not have happened.
Capricious.
Yeah. Arbitrary, capricious, like Ms. Pontieri said. So again, standing by for any questions. If not, then Mr. Tyner will carry on with his presentation.
Thank you. Great, great conversation. I'm going to talk a little bit about the subdivision plating process. It is quasi judicial, okay? It's not a legislative action. So our subdivision plating process, when I talk about subdivisions, we're talking about some of these larger residential, single-family developments, such as those at Saw Mill on US-1, they go through this subdivision plating process. It's a three-tiered process. It includes the subdivision master plan, which is the first stage of that application process. Then we have part two is the preliminary plat, and then finally, the third process is the final plat of that process. Now, this takes, to go through this whole subdivision process, it could take up to three years or more to go through this process. It is a very long process to get through. I do want to talk about, we talked a little bit about our experts and providing that substantial competent evidence. And a lot of times, I think our citizens see our project manager that's giving the presentation for city council. You may see Estelle, who's here, maybe with Dennis Leep at the final plat stage, but that's not who's reviewing all of these, all of this information through this long, long process. We have a technical review team that have all of our experts on the different trades. We have a certified floodplain manager that will look at each and every one of these applications that come in to make sure that if they're in a floodplain, to get out of the floodplain, to follow the FEMA process, to make sure we're not in the floodplain. They go out and do studies to make sure that we're not impacting the floodplain. And some of these studies itself can take over a year. They have to analyze it, they have to get a consultant who's an expert in floodplain, has to go through FEMA. We also have our stormwater engineer who reviews every single one of these plans that makes sure that it's consistent with our stormwater plans and our stormwater code. We also have the utilities. Every single one of these plans and application types, we have representatives from our utility department, making sure that they meet our land development code, make sure that they meet all of our technical standards, the size of the pipes, you name it, you know, flow valves and all those kind of details. We also have, not one, but now we have two, traffic professionals. We have Fong Nguyen that you have met and seen in the presentation, that every one of these applications, we're making sure that they meet our level of service standards when it comes to transportation, that we have appropriate ingress and egress, and our other traffic engineers making sure that operations are right, that the standards of, you know, stop signs, striping, and those type of things are met, too. So we have two professionals actually looking at this. Not only that, we also require, from the consultant side, that they have to have a, you know, a transportation planner that's providing the studies. They go out, they spend the money to make sure they get the traffic studies done, and then we have the experts that review their experts to make sure that they're doing it right. We also have, you have seen Dennis Leep, he's our site development manager. Mr. Leep has over 25, 30 years of experience, both in the private sector. He is an engineer. He looks at every single grade that comes in on one of these subdivision plans, and that is tedious. You have 100 pages, you're looking at the grades, you're making sure the slopes are right, and those type of things. We have fire representation from our fire department that sits on our TRX team and looks at these applications to make sure that we have appropriate fire ingress and egress, that they're meeting all of the fire prevention codes on these site plans or on these subdivisions. We also have an environmental professional that we are looking at threatened endangered species, cultural resources, making sure that their professional environmental that we require, that they have to have a certain amount of years and certification, can't just have an engineer do it, you can't just have a landscape architect. You have to have an environmental professional in the field that is doing these studies, looking at the habitat type, looking at where the floodplains are, looking to see if there's any gopher tortoise or threatened endangered species, and making sure that they comply with our code. And we have our environmental professional making sure that they're doing the right thing and that they're following our code. We also have a landscape architect as well. We also require the applicant to have a certified landscape architect to put those plans together, to make sure that we are preserving our natural resources, any historical specimen trees to rearrange a site. So we do have a great team that's looking at, and I think it's very important, because, you know, unfortunately, when we're doing a presentation, you're probably just seeing one or two people, and it seems pretty quick, but this is a very long process. And in city council, you have a lot of great experts that are reviewing these plans as well. The first portion of the step one is the subdivision master plan. This is kind of a planning exercise. We require a generalized plan. The master plan sets the foundation, the layout of the development, looking at the open space, the right of ways, the access... Uh, looking at the open space, the right of ways, uh, the access. Some of the key things that are very important about the subdivision master plan, one of the first things that we really like to look at is your natural resources, right? How many historical, uh, oak trees do you have on that property? Are you within a floodplain? Where are your wetlands? That is a key component. We need to have all those studies done at step one. Because of step one, what happens is you have a floodplain. No, 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 you can't put lots in there. Now you have to go and do that, that long, long FEMA study or you move your lots and you, and you go outside of those areas and you try to protect those wetland areas. So it's very key concept that the, at the beginning stage of the subdivision master plan to hit some of those real high level things that can, um, um, really change the, the, the project layout. Uh, the subdivision master plan, as you know, um, that this is, um, reviewed by the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board. Uh, they do look at, uh, all subdivision master plans that are over, uh, 100 units. And then the criteria that you are very familiar with, uh, that was within our land development code. We have specific criteria within our land development code to meet, but also most importantly is meeting all of our requirements of our land development code. Not just the eight bullets that you commonly hear, but we are looking at all the, uh, different codes that, that they meet. Uh, I have, part of your submittal I thought was really important and key is in your application, you have an actual checklist for each of the, um, things that we require and it references back to land development code. So those are the type of things, and I thought it was real helpful that you would see each of the individuals that are, are experts of what they require and what they're looking for. Um, but just in summary, this ain't all over the list. I think some, some of them are two pages. You know, during the subdivision master plan process, you, we're going to require current boundary survey, title work, uh, site plan, the conceptual utility drainage. Uh, and again, the, the environmental assessment is, is really big. Uh, landscape buffers, not at this juncture, not specific trees, but the buffers themselves. Uh, we require, start requiring a traffic analysis, uh, during this stage of the game. And then, uh, recreation, you know, the locate where, where the recreation may be on, on the property. So that is the, kind of the 35 foot thousand level of the subdivision master plan. Now, once you get a development order for that, you are allowed to submit for a preliminary plat application. And this was, um, approval was administration in this part. And this is where you transform that master plan into a detailed technical constructions, site plan. Uh, defines the engineering design, all your engineering is conducted, your roads, your storm order systems, your utility, your, your infrastructure. Um, and we have, you know, our chapter nine of our land development code, our environmental section, our landscape section has very, very detailed criteria of what is required for this. Our, our technical, our utility has a, uh, really probably four inch book on, on the technical aspects of what size pipes need to be. All this information is, is provided at this time. And I mentioned Mr. Leap back there with the grades. This is where you have all the grading. Where's your water, your stormwater ponds? How deep are they going to be? Where are they going to discharge? And we're not the only one looking at stormwater ponds. St. John's River Water Management District also requires stormwater, um, um, permits as well. So this is where you have your landscape, what kind of trees you're going to have, shrubs, your foundation planes, all, all your details in, within this. So I probably, um, in, in part of the submission, let me, let me go through this slide. Uh, you have, you have all this in your packet too, but for, for the residents, it is a substantial, uh, submittal package. You have to have their current boundary survey, full civil engineering construction plan sealed by a licensed engineer. Not anybody could do this. Uh, detailed utility system drawings, your water, your sewer, your reuse lines, uh, your storm order, your storm order calculations and modeling of what you're going to be utilizing, your landscape, tree preservation, environmental assessment, environmental permits. That doesn't end. You got to keep, keep doing that. Your fire safety, emergency access details, traffic impact analysis. Your ADA, I, I mentioned to fail, our building official is also part of this review to make sure that ADA and access is there in accordance with our, uh, Florida building code and our land development code. And then, you know, we require the HOA and, and, um, uh, proof that they, they will have an HOA to maintain because, you know, I kind of regress a little bit because I, because I'm really surprised that, that me talking with the public on how much money, you know, to maintain some of these private developments. Now you remember when we became a city, we inherited 45,000 platted lots in that original ITT plan with all those public roads with the utilities and with the swell system, right? Part of this preliminary plat application and part of our land development code is you're not doing a swell system anymore. It, we, our code requires curb and gutter with a self-maintained stormwater pond. We are not going out in the future as a city and maintaining swells. We already have enough of those swells that we continue to maintain and will continue to maintain. Same thing with roads. I remember 1998, one of the big, big reasons the city wanted to incorporate was that the county was not maintaining our neighborhood roads. You had grass growing through them. It costs a lot of money to maintain these roads. Any of these new developments, that's the developer's cost, the cost of building these roads and the cost of maintaining these roads. The city is not going in in the future off a sawgrass, off a US1 with these new, new developments and maintaining the roads in the future. That's done by an HOA. And you have seen city council, we've had four or five of them already with the CDDs that are being established that will be maintaining all these infrastructure, you know, all the pipes, all the standards of, of, of the utilities that are being put in at the cost, sole cost of, of the developer. So I wanted that be known to our public because I don't think a whole lot of folks know that, you know, that, that we're maintaining this. These are all new development. All utilities are underground, you know, all that being privately maintained. And then finally, after all this is done with, with the review, and I will tell you how the review goes with the subdivision master plan and the preliminary plat. What happens is this. An application comes in, has to be a full, complete application or else it's going to be denied. You know, you have to have all that information, you know, we need the information. Don't, don't, um, you know, if you don't have the, uh, utility information, it's a waste of time for us to review that. So we're pretty strict on making sure we have a complete application review. And what happens is our technical team, our experts review this based on their experts. And we provide comments back to them, back to the applicant. And a lot of times on the first submittal, it could be quite extensive where they're not meeting our code of each of our experts that, that are here with the city on our, uh, technical review team. And then they submit back to us, addressing those comments. Again, through this three-stage process, this could go on for, for two to three years of going back and forth. So, you know, sometimes when we do bring a subdivision master plan or plans to city council, the resident should know that sometimes it has taken years for us, for your experts that you have to go through back and forth with this applicant to make sure that we have reasonable assurances that these applications are going to meet the land development code. Me as a land use administrator will not take an application to planning board or city council if it doesn't meet the land, if, if we do not believe it meets the land development code, we will not take it. Now every applicant has a right to move forward and they can disagree with us. And every, every so often they'll come forward and you'll see staff recommend denial. But on the most part, we have gone through this process with them and will not bring it forward until we believe it meets the land development code. So step three is the final step. All the infrastructure is complete or all the plans are complete and most likely they have, uh, obtained a site development permit and have started that horizontal construction of the entire site. So for the final plat, it really is a, um, you know, a, an exercise of just a demonstration of, uh, making the lots legal. It's a survey exercise. It has to meet state law, you know, um, Mr. Duffy's group is a big part of our review of our final plats. Um, our planning staff is as well. One thing that's unique about, uh, final plats is it requires a second party surveyor because there's a lot of survey work involved of creating these lots of record. So the applicant has a survey, we review it, our engineers review it. But also we hire at the cost of the applicant, they, they give us the check at the end of the day, a second party reviewer that makes sure that it's meeting state statute on that. So it really is a technical exercise at that point. And then we would also require if any of the infrastructure horizontal construction is not completed by the time of the final plat, we would require a bond, um, to be provided, um, to that as well. So it really is a survey exercise, uh, make sure we're meeting, uh, state statute 177. Um, and then, and then once that plat is done and they meet the state requirements and the survey requirements, then it's goes on a Mylar, it's signed and then, then it's recorded. And then those property owners are then able to sell those, those, those lots of record. So any questions on, um, the subdivision process itself?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple. Yeah, thank you. So I just want to be clear, uh, going forward with future developments, not ITT plots that they were not, our code, it says we're not going to move forward with swells. I just want to make sure that everybody out in the public understands that distinction, not the vacant ITT land next door. That's, that's been already, already planned out. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, what happens if we have a development that, um, is not within, that's, that's, that's being developed and is not within the city? For example, if they want to be annexed and after the fact, do we have any of those situations? I know we do with commercial property, but a development that was, was, was developed and constructed outside. I don't know. Do we have, we had that situation? My, my, really my point is, you know, how do we ensure they follow these, these, this type of a checklist if it's not the case?
So if, if it's not developed, you know, we have our water, we, we have our, um, our water, um, area where we would serve. That was done through the, um, water wars way back, way back in the day. So we have those areas that we know will be annexed. For example, the BJ's.
Right.
You know, that was BJ's itself was developed within Flagler County utilizing their land development code, but we have an interlocal agreement. We actually reviewed those plans as well.
Okay.
So anything within our service area?
Yeah, they are.
Within our service area, yes, that's right.
And then, and then you may recall that there was another commercial lot that they came in through an annexation petition and you, city council, uh, requested that they bring their comp plan amendment at the same time and their zoning at the same time as the second read of their annexation. So they will be in here, they will follow our entire land development code once, once they get into this.
Where are they at with that, by the way?
They're, 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 uh, they're close. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. There's a lot of work they had to do.
Okay. Well, I, I'm very comfortable with the checklist and the process. I just wanted to make sure that everyone listening that, um, you know, we, we do our very best to bring everybody in and make, you know, try to make them adhere to, to our standards and process so that we're consistent across the board. So.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Ray. Excellent presentation.
You're welcome. So next I'm going to pass it on to Pete.
Okay. Um, good evening again. Uh, this is the current in approved developments. It's not a physical pipeline. It's something that's in the works. This is kind of like a tracking system that we're going to show you.
Got your mic?
Oh, can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. Um, this is a little bit like a tracking system. It shows where the wastewater is going to, which plant and a few other, um, important details. This table shows all projects in, uh, in same level of approval. And this starts in April 1st. Uh, there are 18,883 dwelling units, uh, units in a pipeline either approved or being, uh, reviewed for some consideration. How quickly they are built or consumed, um, has many factors, the largest being economical shifts. For example, in the five-year period from 2008 and 2012, during the great recession, only 645 dwelling units, uh, were built in a city compared to last year when we, there were 2,036. Big comparison there. Other factors include, uh, price, uh, like in the, um, sanctuary where 59 of the 165 approved, uh, in 1999 still remain. Uh, this table here illustrates where the pipeline dwelling units will flow to each wastewater treatment facility. All of the town center DRIs flows to plant one, while all of the Palm Coast Park DRI flows to plant two. The remaining ITT lots are estimated based on, uh, location with 80% going to plant one and 20% going to plant two. All other project flows are accurate based on their locations.
Could you go back for a second, Pete?
Sure.
That Palm Coast DRI at 3,104, that includes those apartments that are slated for the north end of Bel Air at the Metansus intersection. There's supposed to be two more developments going in there on the west side. Is that, are they accounted for in that number?
I don't know. Um, I think maybe Jose could be able to answer that question.
Mayor, if they have an approved development order, so yes, it does include.
Okay, thanks. So this is, uh, a kind of an accumulation of everything that I just mentioned, all put together in one slide. The city's historical wastewater used per dwelling unit is 180 gallons, uh, per day because this includes commercial locations to support these residents. We use the terminology equivalent residential unit or ERU. To support the, uh, 13,381 additional units assigned to wastewater treatment plant number one, we will need 2.4 million gallons of additional capacity. When plant expansion is complete in 2028, the, the facility will have a capacity of 10.83 million gallons per day. After adding the annual average daily flow to additional gallons per day to support the pipeline, there will be a remaining capacity of just over 2 million gallons per day, uh, enough to support another 11,496 future ERUs. For water treatment plant number two, an additional 981,000 gallons are needed to support the pipeline. Now that the 2 million gallons expansion is complete, uh, bring in plant capacity to 4 million gallons per day. There is sufficient capacity to handle the units in the pipeline and an additional 8,974 future ERUs. It should be noted that after the new membranes are installed, the plant capacity is, is expected to be rerated at approximately, uh, 5.2 million gallons per day, uh, providing even more capacity.
And I just wanted to add a note in there. You know, typically when your plant reaches 80% capacity is when you, you're start, you're mandated to start looking at planning for additional future capacity. And these are some old slides. I apologize. They're, they're hard to read. But back when we did our utility rate study, we also looked at projections of not just residential use, but commercial use. So, you know, you, the utility department collected data on the, all the utility agreements and what projects were completed and what ERUs for water and wastewater, you know, the ERCs. the six years or so here, it's about 100 units per year for each water and wastewater. So, you know, in comparison to the additional residential units, anyway, at 2,300, you know, or so last year, you know, so it's probably 5 to 10% of the, the growth, you know, each year, if you average it out. So, you know, residential units do make up the majority of the capacity needs of our plants. And this here just, you know, goes back in time, looking at what was in the 2018 study and what was actual, you know? So this is when we started to see the ramping up in development. So the, the, the commercial growth was higher than expected during those time periods, but again, it is still just a small portion compared to the residential growth that we did see.
Any follow-up questions for staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to go back to that, the wastewater treatment plant slides. So what you're saying is that based on our capacity increases and the completion in 2028 of the expansion for wastewater treatment plant number one, that we not only have enough capacity for the entitlements, but also for this 11,496 and 8974?
Yes, that's.
So that would be above.
That's how it calculates out. And we're going to be doing a wastewater master plan soon. It might help us refine some of these numbers here, but this, these look fairly, pretty accurate.
No, so this, I mean, to me, obviously, we have a bunch of different things within the utility system that we're funding and trying to, to correct, but this to me, you know, paints a less bleak outlook in terms of capacity, once we get through these expansions that we need to do.
Can you go back to the developments and some level of approval process? Yes, this one. So where it says year approved, is that the entitlement approval? So is that for the actual dwelling unit entitlements, that, those amounts?
That's when they got the final go-ahead to develop?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
The year approved, that's what she's asking.
Yes, so the year approved, looking at this, it would be, it looks like it's the date of, for Town Center and Palm Coast Park, the year of a, a development order was issued for that particular DRI. All other projects, that would mean that they came into the application system between those years, and of course, the remaining ITT lots, I believe it was like 1977 that the last ITT lot was planted.
Okay, so I guess where, where I want to be very clear, all these, these units, they still have to go through the process, Ray, that you described. So the development orders list the entitlements. So in other words, however many dwelling units we have in that development order, this is permitted, this is the limit. That was done, obviously, a long time ago, but for most of these. For the ITT lots, they still would have to come before us for what prior to being able to start building? Nothing. Okay, so truly, the ITT lots could go in the ground tomorrow, right? But the ones in the neighborhoods, well, the, all of the projects, are those still, what are those comprised of? Your, your regular multifamily neighborhoods, things like that?
Yes, ma'am. So the 18,000 minus the ITT lots, those would be the number of units that are in some level of approval, either subdivision master plan.
Okay.
They might have received a preliminary plat approval already, but there, there is a bullet point there, the second one. The number of units remaining with a final plat and technical site plan approval is 13,335. So if you're to equate an ITT lot, being able to come in and get a permit and build tomorrow, the 13,335 is the number, not the 18, because the 18, again, would be in some level of development that might have just started. We have an application in our system that says, oh, I want to.
That could include development orders that were issued, but nobody has ever followed.
But only for multifamily, I'm sorry. If, if, if you're a multifamily development and you have received a development order for a technical site plan, then you're ready to go to a building permit Friday, tomorrow.
Okay, so, so the amount that could, we could, that could be moved on tomorrow if, if they wanted to, is the 13,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Go to the next slide, please. Maybe not this one. Go to the next one. This is with all the upgrades, once we get there, or is this?
That's correct, except for wastewater treatment plant number three, and I don't know if, in the pipeline, that's going to happen, but that is going to happen at some point. So there'll be another, probably 2.0 million gallon per day wastewater plant down at the south end, but again, I'm not sure when that's going to take place.
Right, that's outside our.
You're gonna, you're gonna.
Yeah.
Pete, I know you're a technical guy. These numbers are based on, once we do, we do all the upgrades that we have in the queue, or is this as of now?
This is.
As of now, something's wrong.
2028, 2028 would be the.
2028.
To answer your question, yes.
This would be after you approve the bond and we complete the expansion to one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just a wastewater treatment plant one expansion would be what creates this number.
Yes, yep, right.
So then I think the money question is, at, at our current capacity, what are the dwelling units we have room for?
Currently, without the 2028, I will have to get back with you on that.
I think that's important to know, because.
Yep.
I mean, presumably, right, we always hear when you all come for the final plat approval, there's always a slide on whether or not there's capacity, obviously, and you all wouldn't recommend approval if there weren't, but that's no longer coming before this board thanks to Senate Bill 180. So, I mean, we made, we came to consensus that we want you all to bring it to us just to keep us updated, but for planning purposes and as we look at this endeavor of our water and wastewater, I think it's important that we know and that the public knows at this point, what are the ERUs at the current capacity that we have remaining and what does that equate to in dwelling units?
Yeah, we'll have to come back on that.
Well, so the total required capacity, to my understanding, that's with the pipeline, correct?
Yes.
And so we see that currently, we have a shortfall of 2.4 on number one and about 1 million on number two. I don't know that, what that equates to in terms of dwelling units, but.
Plus, you're plus on wastewater treatment plant two, because we just expanded that plant to four.
Okay, so it's hitting the 4 million now. Okay, so we're 2.6 over on two, and then we're two under, 2.1 under on one. So we're close to break even as long as all the flows can be maintained, but that's, that's not going to happen, so we still need some capacity on one.
I think something I missed during my presentation, which I think it's really important, is that, you know, the second phase of preliminary plat stage, and when they do all their technical plans and this, and then they, once they got approval, they can start construction. Well, part of that process is they're required to have a, a utility master plan, an agreement, utility agreement with the utility department that they calculate, you know, how much money they're going to pay, what the usage is going to be and those type of things. So if, if there was not capacity during that process of the game or that stage, right, then we would not issue a development order, because that's a requirement of a development order that they have, those, those agreements with the utility.
And we're, whenever we issue those, we're reserving capacity, right? To keep track of what we've already.
That's right. That's right. So that's, that gives us, you know, once, you know, the team, they have that, those agreements, those agreements in place, they have assurance that they have capacity, then we would issue a development order, but if we don't, we would not issue a development order.
And then that utility development agreement is signed by the utility director and then it's sent to DEP to also account for capacity, and then they're cleared for construction at that point, and then DEP has to certify the system prior to the CO or anything like that. So any, now, this is not ITT Palm Coast, right? This isn't your pep lots or any of that, but any of your new developments, DEP has to come out and certify the system.
And just to clarify, we, we do not reserve capacity, you know, in the utility, so just wanted to make that clarification.
Can you say that again?
So we do not reserve capacity in the utility system. So there's a utility agreement and currently now, based on wastewater plant one being so near its capacity, those are individual permits through DEP. So yes, some of these projects take years to put in the infrastructure, you know, and then phase it out, and when they come to their final plat, they could have had capacity when they, you know, got the agreement two years earlier, but if we have all these ITT infill lots being permitted, and once they go to activate the system two years later, DEP can say, we're not going to approve you to, you know, to activate the system because the utility plant has reached capacity. So that, that's where we are right now in plant one, just because we're so near that, that max.
And how does this analysis incorporate commercial, our commercial needs?
Yeah, well, we look back on that, commercial's 5 to 10% of the total. Yeah, we, we do look at that in our projections, you know, in the, in the capacity analysis, you know, report that's done, there's some factors in growth put in there.
But these ERUs don't take that commercial capacity into account, correct?
Oh, in this chart.
This is residential?
Yeah, they don't.
Yeah, this is correct.
Yep.
It's residential.
So if you, you've, I think we were, we averaged about 100 ERUs per year over the last six years or so. So, you know, they're not huge numbers compared to the dwelling units, but you say ERUs remaining, that, that could be, you know, you know, depending on the business, you know, you're, you're, you know, maybe it's 10,000 homes in 1,400 commercial ERUs.
Yes, one of the things, one of the slides I was looking at was like BJ's was the equivalent of four ERUs? Was that, no, I'm sorry, Bronx Pizza was like these small four ERUs? Is that what I saw on there?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Duffy, did you have some?
I was just going to add off of Carl's thing, when we do get the DEP approval, like when we do our utility agreements, they are all subject to DEP approval. So we have that in our agreements. If something happens where DEP does not prove it, the city's not liable, so I wanted to make sure you guys have that at least.
And I just wanted to clarify, you know, Jose reminded me that 180 gallons per day factors in that commercial use in the residential unit usage, so it's an overall per-capacity system use. So they are accounted for in this number. Say, we say 180 per dwelling unit in your home, but they may only use 160 because you're commercial, those residents are going to the commercial and using those. So system-wide, a dwelling unit uses 180, including their commercial usage.
I see. Okay, so you're not using the house, you're using the person.
Right, so.
The dwelling unit.
Someone may use the, the wastewater facilities, they're going to use them at their home, or they're going to use them at a business somewhere in the city.
Gotcha. Okay.
Did you have something, Councilman Gambero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to say, you know, part, you know, a little bit of a knee-jerk reaction, I'm kind of, you know, with, with, when it comes to final plats and one of the things, even Vice Mayor, you brought this up, I think it's the dwell ratio or how it's, you know, situated on the lot, do we have enough space, everything, and we, we, we've asked to kind of add that analysis in any agenda items. You know, I think, I don't know, I think the feeling up here is, hey, it'd be nice to see what the water capacity is, you know, when you bring this final plat to, to this board, but you, but the other piece is, you wouldn't even bring it to us if it didn't, if it didn't meet that standard, right? You, and so it's all part of the checklist and we've got DEP, right, all in our business to make sure that, that we're compliant. So, okay, this is really good presentation. I think, I think these numbers, these, these last few slides are really important, and I don't know, Council, I think this is something that maybe we, we should post and communicate because it, it lays out, you know, and addresses some of the concerns that, that our residents have. I think this is a really important communication piece to add, as the Vice Mayor says, to the money slide collections that, that we think it's important to, to capitalize on and, and make sure we're transparent about. So excellent presentation, really good discussion. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else have any follow-ups?
No, thank you guys very much.
We'll open this up for public comment. Anyone have any public comments? Seeing no one come forward? I'm just messing with you. I'm, I'm messing with you guys.
That was predictable. Okay. One other question I have here is knowing that our infrastructure can't sustain the growth, and I'm not talking only about water, but the roads and all that, how do we stop the, the building applications? And I heard the, the legal presentation, and I think it's a dangerous approach, because if only experts, their studies, their proof go well, that erases the opinion of the local residents. So the city council, you also have opinions, you have gut feelings, you have opinions, and should not, should not you work without fear of the judges? You know, why would a judge who doesn't even live here have more power than the decisions you take? And why would we need substantial proof, burden of proof to cancel a project? That really bugs me. And those are projects that residents don't want, by the way, and they would have to pay for the, the long-term effect.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Duarte.
Jeanne Duarte, I want to take us down memory lane for a moment. October 2024, our Vice Mayor, she was holding up in a, in a meeting, four hours and 15 minutes into a meeting, about the DRIs for Loop Road, Westford Expansion, $115 million, where she claimed that she didn't expect a paycheck back to the state for the, those funds, but she did expect infrastructure. What is going on with that and why are we still using those allocated funds from the state for current uses? Those funds should be reallocated, taken back and proposed for wastewater treatment plant one. Nothing should be going on with the Westford Expansion, which I see is still moving forward. Nothing should be going on with it until wastewater treatment plant one is complete. Wastewater Treatment Plant Two happened very quickly. Even the residents that watch you guys closely didn't even realize it had been brought to completion. So that, those funds, that $115 million or whatever it is at this point, really needs to be reallocated somehow, some way to get that wastewater treatment plant one completed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dice. Any follow-up from the council or city manager? Nothing? Okay. We can talk offline, Jeanne and Ms. Chantel, we're trying to close this out. Our last public comment, anyone have any closing? Ms. Henry, do you have anything to say? Any final public comments? Daniel, you got anything? Steve's got something to say. Come on, Steve, what you got?
I want to say that, this is Steve Carr. I want to say that I appreciate what the city has been doing with looking at some of the sewer sand, wastewater over on Florida Park Drive, and they've got teams over there working on it, and I just, I want to say thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that being said, we'll close out public comment, we'll bring it back to the dice. I don't think we have any, thank you for that, Steve. Discussion matters not on the agenda by the city council. Any, any members of the council have anything, pleasant comments?
I don't have anything.
I'll be very quick. I just want to congratulate Chief Barry Hill on two decades with our fire department. Thank you for your service, sir.
Get 25, you could be a Roman citizen, and that, the cutoff to become a Roman citizen for a soldier. Yeah, I think, Councilman Gambero? Mr. Sullivan?
No.
I'll, I'll close out with this here. That, that hurricane is forming out there. We don't have, we don't know what's going to happen with it yet, so we're cautiously optimistic. Uh, but. don't have, we don't know what's going to happen with it yet, so we're cautiously optimistic. But I would, City Manager, I don't know how far Matt has to be notified to set up sandbag stations. I would say at least 96 hours or four days. So we just need to monitor that. I'm, I'm sure Chief Barry Hill's all over it. You're monitoring, chief, in coordination with, uh, man, uh, the guy over at county. Yes, Mr. Lord, emergency management. So everybody just keep an eye out for that and watch the weather, pay attention and be ready to batten down the hatches if you have to. That's all I have. Anybody else? City, okay. Mr. Duffy, nothing? City, city manager?
We are getting storm ready, sir, but according to FDEM, it serves no threat to Florida in the next seven to 10 days.
Yeah, well, they said it wobbled to the south a little, so I watched.
We'll get a better picture here.
Yeah. We'll get a few more days into it. I, I always watch them. I pay attention to storms all the time. Anything else? Any alibis?
Motion to adjourn.